I'm going to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 6th. We met in closed session since the previous meeting about a week and a half ago, and I'll ask the city attorney if there was anything to report out.
Thank you. Good evening. No reportable action was taken in closed session at the August 29 meeting.
Thank you so much. I will request that the city clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yaren Scalotti.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here. Good evening, and I welcome you to tonight's city council meeting. I know that many of you are here because you're angry, concerned, and have questions regarding a use-of-force incident by San Rafael police officers. We are interested in what you have to say, and we are ready to listen. As it might be the first time that some of you have attended a meeting or watched virtually, we are in a hybrid format. I'll talk about that more shortly. I want to explain how our meetings work and how it will go tonight. So we follow a California law which tells us up here how we receive input and what the council can make decisions and comments about. The city releases an agenda several days prior to the meeting, and the meeting, the agenda for this meeting, was released last Thursday. The agenda, we do it this way because the agenda enables everyone to know what policies the city will be discussing and voting on, so everyone can come prepared, participate. Tonight's agenda, so the printed agenda, has the following items. We have a consent calendar. We have a presentation around September Suicide Prevention Month. We have approval of an on-street dining program, discussion of boards and commissions, a response to a grand jury housing report, and Measure A work plan. The way the Brown Act works is that those are the business items on the agenda that we hope to get to, but tonight the council wants to hear first from everyone who came to speak. Unfortunately, the Brown Act provides such an opportunity for the council to hear anything you have to say during public open time, which is at the very beginning of this meeting. This is a time where we're going to sit here and simply listen. Tonight, we will listen to those who'd like to speak, and that's what the cards are for. But even if you haven't filled out a card, you'll, you can still speak. It's just a way to be organized. And at the conclusion of public open time, the city attorney will make additional comments. As we have a hybrid meeting, which means you are all here, but people are also watching virtually, the way that we're going to manage public open time is first for the folks here physically in the chamber. We'll do the cards that we've talked about, and then I'll invite anyone else to come down and speak. And after that, we'll turn to the virtual commentators, and the city clerk will tell them shortly how they can participate. We're going to watch the time, and if we're still receiving public comment at 10:00, 10:30 p.m., then the items on the business agenda that I just listed will be continued to a future meeting, so we can continue to listen to all the input this evening. Hopefully, understanding how it will work tonight is helpful to you. We want to hear what you have to say. So I know I speak for the council when I say we are deeply saddened, distressed, and concerned about the police incident. We also recognize that we can't go back and change what has already happened. But what we can do and will do is have an independent investigation that will inform any disciplinary action. We will also work with our community partners to determine how we start rebuilding trust with each other. I have spoken with two key community partners, the directors of both Canal Alliance and the Multicultural Center of Marin, and they are ready to work together with the city. We look forward to their collaboration and your input. Two years ago, after the murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis, San Rafael worked with the community and adopted the eight "can't wait" measures to clarify and enhance the police department policies against excessive use of force. The guiding principle of these policies is reverence for human life. These policies remain on the book. So in addition to the city's investigation, the independent investigation of the specific incident will continue to review the implementation of these important eight "can't wait" policies. Thank you for your patience. I know we started a little bit after 7:00 getting the technology online. And thank you for letting me welcome you and explain tonight's meeting and to make a few comments. Now is the time for us to sit, to come together and start to rebuild trust. We are eager to hear your thoughts. And I know we will listen as each other come to the podium and to respectfully hear what everyone in the room has to say. That's how we do it here in San Rafael. We listen to what each other has to say. So I'll turn to our city clerk, and she'll further explain how to participate. After her explanation, we will start with public open time and the cards. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Before we begin, we'd like to announce that tonight's city council meeting will include Spanish-language simultaneous and consecutive interpretation provided by qualified interpreters on the Spanish channel on Zoom, now through the completion of the city manager and city council member reports. If watching on Zoom, you can join the Spanish channel by clicking on the interpretation icon in the Zoom toolbar. It does look like a globe. And we have posted a link to the Zoom meeting and the description of the video on YouTube. If attending in person, you don't have, and don't have access to the Zoom meeting from your mobile device, please come see me or Brenna, and we will get you set up on the device so that you can listen to the meeting in Spanish. As a reminder, we ask that everyone participating tonight, please speak slowly to allow our interpreters to effectively express your comments. And at this time, I'd like to invite Pablo to say the exact same thing that I just said and have that interpreted into Spanish.
Bueno, antes de comenzar, nos gustaría anunciar que la reunión del Consejo Municipal esta noche incluirá interpretación simultánea y consecutiva en español, que va a ser proporcionada este día por intérpretes calificados en el canal de español. Desde ahorita hasta el final de los informes del administrador de la ciudad, el Consejo Municipal. Si están participando a través de Zoom, puede unirse al canal de español haciendo clic en el icono de interpretación en la barra de herramientas de Zoom, que ahora aparece como un globo terrac. Y también hemos publicado un enlace a la reunión de Zoom en la descripción del video en YouTube. Si estás asistiendo aquí en persona y no tiene acceso a la reunión de Zoom desde su dispositivo móvil, venga a verme y le configuraré, configuraré un dispositivo para que puede escuchar la reunión en español. Como recordatorio, les pedimos que todos los participantes de esta noche hablen lentamente para permitir que nuestro intérprete exprese sus comentarios de manera efectiva.
Thank you. This meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube, and members of the public can provide public comment by phone by calling 669-900-9128 using the meeting ID 817-3692-0337. Or they can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. If commenting by phone, please press star 9 when Mayor Kate opens the public comment period. Once you've heard a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star 6 to unmute yourself. If you're commenting through Zoom, please use the raise hand feature to let us know that you would like to speak and wait until you've been unmuted. If you experience any technical difficulties at all, please email us at city.clerk@cityofsanrefel.org. For those of you who are attending in person and wish to provide public comment, please approach the podium once Mayor Kate opens the public comment period. Displayed on the podium and the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. For public comments not related to this evening's agenda, as Mayor Kate just commented, you can fill out the public comment card, which are found here, and then submit them to me. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in, or if you're from outside San Rafael. And we are offering closed captioning for this evening, this evening's meeting on Zoom, and you can select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will review that again when we get to the virtual part. So I'm going to open the public comment, and in order to facilitate having it run smoothly, I'll give three names, and if those three people can just line up, and then we'll do three at a time. Samantha Ramirez, our volunteer citizen of the year. Wait, hold on, but hold on. Let me, let me say all three names first. Jay Inez Benavides and Marina. So Samantha. Oh. Thank you. And while you're waiting, yeah, you can sit in the front while you're waiting. That would work. Yeah, okay.
I'm Samantha Ramirez. I'm here as a community leader, daughter of immigrants. I'm deeply sad and angry to see the mistreatment of Mateo. You have to understand that for Friday, many of us, all we could see on our Instagram was this video. It went viral. We have a whole community that was traumatized by what happened. Okay? And then you want to have this performative stuff. It's Hispanic Heritage Month. It's Black Lives Matter. We don't need any of that. What we need is real action. We need you to stop overpolicing Black and Brown communities. What were they doing? Were they just driving around the community and just going to harass people? You should only go if you're called. We need community solutions. We need to be able to have the opportunity to decide for ourselves what community looks like. I'm not from the canal, but I've grown up in San Rafael my whole life. But here, behind me, you have the new leaders of San Rafael. It's not about the nonprofits anymore. They're not the ones doing the work. It's the community behind me that organized for Friday, for Sunday. We have been out in this heat, in this heat, fighting for justice. You don't know what it's like to watch that video and see somebody that looks like your relative. It was so incredibly wrong. There's no little speeches or little papers that you can send that's going to justify what you did. We're all watching you right now. We're angry, and really, it's us that need to organize. We need to continue to do the work. It's not enough to just come when the cameras are out and march and feel good. Who's willing to do the solutions long-term to make San Rafael safe and to make our community safe for people of color? Because I know I'm ready to do that work.
Thank you. Thank you. Clapping is allowed, although it will make the evening go longer. We want to make sure to hear from all of you. So, yeah, that's true. Jay Inez Benavides. Thank you.
Gracias. Voy a necesitar, por favor, traducción.
Yes, it will happen.
Pertenesco esta comunidad por más de treinta años, y hemos estado siempre pendientes de lo que sucede en nuestra comunidad. Considero yo que lo que acaba de pasar con este amigo Mateo es una injusticia la que están cometiendo esta policía. Creo que no basta, no basta con removerlos. Yo pienso que los deberían de, de sacar de aquí inmediatamente. No sé si me quieran traducir. Sí.
It's, it's, he will say it after. Yeah, after.
Porque yo considero que si los van a mover solamente a otro lugar, van a seguir cometiendo los mismos errores. Entonces, yo creo que se deben de, de sacar principalmente de aquí. Y yo creo, yo creo que es muy necesario que la policía está para cuidarnos y que la policía recibe un salario de los que pagamos impuestos. Y somos muchos los que pagamos impuestos. Entonces, yo creo que no se vale, no se vale que, que cometan este tipo de atropellos con una, con una persona que viene a trabajar, con una persona que viene a luchar, con una persona que viene a hacer más bonitos los jardines y las casas aquí en la región. Entonces, yo creo que se deberían de, de sacar a ellos, porque esto no le conviene a la policía. Nosotros hemos creído por muchos años en la policía, pero si la policía no actúa, entonces, ¿qué va a pasar? Lo único que van a ocasionar es que tengamos miedo a la policía, y eso no está correcto. La policía está para protegernos, para cuidarnos, y no para atropellarnos. Venimos de países en donde la policía es corrupta, y yo creo que aquí, en este país, no debemos permitir la corrupción dentro de la policía, y más en este condado de Marin. Entonces, ojalá que ustedes tomen nota, que la policía tome nota, y en dónde está el entrenamiento tan especial que le dan a la policía. Yo creo que reciben un entrenamiento muy especial para enfrentarse a cualquier tipo de situación. Y Matías, Mateo, perdón, estaba, Mateo estaba recibi, eh, haciendo las indicaciones que le estaba diciendo la policía. No se vale que hayan llegado de esa manera a atacarlo. Gracias.
Thank you. And so, hold on. So now, um, um, it will be translated into English. So go ahead, Pablo.
So I belong to this community now for over 30 years, and I'm always aware of what is going on here. And what happened to Mateo was just an injustice. What was done to just simply remove them, put them on the side lens for now, isn't enough. They have to be taken out of here. They have to be removed. I consider, um, what was done wasn't a mistake. I think it's a mistake what you're doing is not removing him from the force. Here, you know, police are earning a salary from us, the people that pay taxes. And, you know, he's coming here to chase a dream, uh, to work, to help beautify our community's gardens. And here in this region, well, this person, these officers should be removed. You know, what's going to happen if you don't remove them? And things like this keep happening. The police are here to protect us. But if this keeps happening, we're going to become more afraid of the police. And we're not here to clash with them. They shouldn't be clashing with us. You know, we come from countries, a lot of us, where the police is corrupt and they cause a lot of abuse. And that shouldn't be allowed here in Marin.
Thank you. So next, Marina, and then also Capella Parish and Mark Solomons could also come down. Go ahead.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Marina Sanchez. Yo he vivido también como el señor máximo unos 30 años también en el condado de Marin. Y yo, yo pienso que hay mucha gente también aquí que ha sido víctima, no solo de este caso, sino de muchos casos atrás. Lo que pasa que la gente no habla y no quiere hablar por vergüenza o por el qué dirán de la gente, pero no es eso. Tenemos que hablar como cualquier ser humano que vive en este condado. Tenemos los mismos derechos de cualquier americano que viva aquí también. Eh, yo pienso que hay muchos americanos también que tienen un trabajador, tal vez como Mateo, tal vez un salvadoreño, un guatemalteco, de cualquier país que sea. Pero yo pienso que también la policía tiene que respetar eso. Eh, yo no sé qué va a pasar de aquí en adelante. Quisiéramos saber, yo pienso que todos los que estamos aquí, cuál es el paso a seguir después de esto. Y, y estaríamos agradecidos si nos informaran también cuál es lo, lo próximo después de esto. Los van a dejar o los van a tener igual, como dijo el señor. Aquí lo hacen, los van a mover a otro lado, va a ser lo mismo. Eh, entonces, yo pienso que también como el señor, deberían de darles un castigo más drástico para que otros iguales a ellos no vuelvan a repetir las cosas. Porque muchos de nosotros también somos víctimas de ellos mismos. Eh, hay policías también que a veces por una luz de un carro que no les sirve, ya lo están parando, le están quitando su carro. Por, tal vez hasta por no tener una licencia, o tal vez nada más por tener la luz quebrada. Yo pienso que eso no es justo. Cuando hay otros criminales de verdad que deberían de atraparlos o deberían de estar viendo esos casos en lugar de estar agarrando a un inocente, porque toda la gente que está aquí es gente trabajadora. Y, y nadie le da nada si no lo trabaja. Gracias.
Thank you, Marina.
Hello, my name is Marina Sanchez. And like the gentleman, I've been living here in the county of Marin for about 30 years now. And I think lots of people here in this room, or lots of people here in Marin, are victims. And people just don't speak up, you know? Maybe because we're ashamed, or what are other people going to say? But we should speak up. We have the same rights as any other American living here. Um, and things like this should be reported, and they shouldn't happen. And we want to know, and I think we're all interested, in what's going to happen moving forward. What are the next steps going to be? I think we're all going to be very grateful to hear what comes next. Um, if he's going to stay here, or if they're going to stay here, or they're going to move somewhere else. I think if they move somewhere else, I think the same things are just going to keep happening. You know, something more drastic. So I think a more drastic punishment should be handed off. And I think, uh, this is something that's got to be taken care of right away. You know, a police officer at times, for having a broken light, they will pull you over. Next thing you know, your car is getting towed, your license is being removed or revoked. And that's not just, that's not justice. You know, there's other criminals out there who are doing worse things. Why aren't you chasing them? Chase them around. You know, we're all here, and we're all hard workers. That's what we're here for. Thank you.
Thank you. Capella Parish. Capella Parish, and then Mark Solomon, and then Rita Dempsey.
I'm a citizen of the community of the west end of downtown San Rafael, off Fourth Street. I'm a single parent of a household, and I also have a home business license. I'm requesting that there be signs placed on both sides of the 1500 block, a Fourth Street from F Street to Shaver Street that prohibits skateboarding. In the past year, as a resident of downtown Fourth Street, I have experienced three... I have experienced three violent attacks. My apartment was broken into while I was home with my minor child who was attending school by Zoom. This violent perpetrator was later apprehended in a separate case just two and a half weeks ago after a five-hour manhunt. Last fall, I was assaulted with great bodily injury, shot at with a firearm one block from here. A nearly run over while I was walking my dog in front of my apartment. One of the weapons used was the metal underside, the wheels and trucks of a skateboard. I have still not recovered from this and I'm in constant pain. A week and a half ago, I was assaulted again after parking my car, after bringing home laundry from the laundromat. All three people who assaulted me were unhoused. The reason why I'm telling you this is that each time the SRPD came to my aid, I do not believe in anyone getting fired from their job, but I do believe in ongoing training and reassignment. My request is that there be added signs to both sides of the fifteen hundred block on Fourth Street from F Street to Shaver Street and enforcement of no skateboarding on this block of Fourth Street. I do not want to hear the constant sound that reminds me of my assault from last year. In my neighborhood, the fifteen hundred block of Fourth Street, on Friday, August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, a mob of young, drunk, white male, twenty to twenty-five-year-old skateboarders, twenty-five individuals jumped and badly beat up a Hispanic man who was going home with his beer. That is three blocks from here. Again, I ask for the enforcement of no skateboarding on Fourth Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Capella. And I will have your card to the city manager so he can follow up with you regarding your request. Okay, Mark Solomons.
Thank you.
Rita Dempsey. And Tonatich Beltran.
Thank you. My name is Mark Solomons and I'm from Fairfax. Uh, first time coming to be here. And I'm very, very sad. I mean, I'm near tears. It just can't believe that a policeman would punch somebody because that's what this is about. The IJ just did a, uh, an article about the protesting in the street and reactions, and they're calling it on the title, Bloody Arrest in San Rafael. The headline should be Officer Punches a Citizen. I mean, it's insane. I started a petition. I've done this once before. And it simply says Marin residents will not tolerate police brutality. Two thousand three hundred people have signed it in less than three days. On July twenty-seventh, we know what happened. Brandon Nail harassed and beat the man who was unarmed and cooperative. This is an example of institutional power running amok. Both officers must be fired immediately. In addition, Officer Brandon Nail should be charged with assault. Now, this isn't for you to hear. This is, this is for DA Pugoli. And I thought that even Chief Spiller would be here to hear some of the comments. But apparently, you are here. Well, thank you. Thank you for coming. Appreciate that. But these officers do not belong on the force, period. And we also hear a sergeant on the tape saying, "You're giving me great experience with use of force, dude." What is that? Wrong, wrong behavior. So we call on the DA and we call, uh, to file criminal charges, and that's about it.
Rita, Tonatich Beltran, and then Alejandra Esparra. And thank you for speaking slowly for the interpreter as well. I appreciate that.
Mayor Kate, if I may, just as a reminder, if she has called your name, if Mayor Kate's called your name on the card, you're welcome to get in line, just as a reminder.
Or just be ready, whatever works out. Okay, go ahead, Rita.
Hello, my name is Rita Dempsey.
Can you put the microphone a little closer? It's hard to hear.
My name is Rita Dempsey. I'm from San Anselmo. And I'm here to comment on the brutal beating of Mateo. I am enraged by what I saw. I believe officers Mazaregos and Nail need to be appropriately prosecuted for their abuse of power towards Mateo. If San Rafael Police Department is complicit in allowing this behavior, they are ratifying it. That can't happen. And for the officers that stood by and did nothing to intervene, shame on you. You can't do that and you should be held accountable. And as far as the fist bumping and smiles between officers afterwards, this is indicative of a culture of allowed abuse within the San Rafael Police Department. This culture extends beyond this one incident. San Rafael Police Department needs to change this unacceptable behavior and live up to best policing practices. San Rafael PD needs to do better for citizens of San Rafael. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita.
My name is Donati Beltran. My parents met in Canal and I'm a proud product of my community. I'm clearly upset, as are many people in this room, but I'm not surprised. Like somebody said earlier, this behavior is actually quite common and something that we witness monthly, if not weekly. This is something that I've grown up witnessing, seeing my peers, my relatives, and my friends experience on a daily basis. Racial profiling and discrimination towards our Black and Brown communities is very real. And you're, I laugh at this, you know, these performative creations that you guys think is going to create any change because it's been years since 2020 and you guys said we're going to have results. And they're still creating the same damage and inflicting the same violence on our communities, Black and Brown. Marin County is known as one of the most racially segregated community counties in the Bay Area. So I'm not sure why we're all acting surprised, acting like, you know, doing this, which has been done repetitively before, is going to create any change. This is the new generation of people that are trying to create change for our communities. And we want to see results. We want to see material changes, not just performative actions. You guys get paid to be here. You don't get, you don't have to go to these communities and experience our lives day in, day out of seeing police terrorize our communities. I'm sure you already know that police function as a punitive measure. They don't bring safety, they don't bring any type of accountability, they don't bring material changes that our communities need. We need safe housing. We need affordable food, affordable rent. We need, these are things that are going to keep our people safe. Mental health care, like, and these nonprofits are not doing any of that. They're hoarding the resources and they're incredibly inaccessible. So I just ask that you, you listen to the people here today and really reflect on your role in this community, in this society, and what is going to come of that. And also fire these fucking pigs.
Alex, sorry, my glasses on. Alejandra Florencia Parada and Belmarco.
I am here today to express the support of the victim of the police brutality and to call for transparency in the investigation of a violence committed by San Rafael police officers. We need transparency in the investigation of this incident and accountability to show that behavior like this won't be tolerated in the city of San Rafael or San Rafael Police Department. We need a third party doing the investigation. How can we allow police police themselves? That is just ridiculous. And I will be saying this in Spanish too. Estoy aquí para expresar mi apoyo por la víctima de la brutalidad policial y para pedir una investigación transparente sobre la violencia cometida por los oficiales de la policía de San Rafael. Nosotros necesitamos transparencia en la investigación de este incidente y encontrar a los responsables para mostrar que la historia que pasó no será tolerada en la ciudad de San Rafael y al Departamento de Justicia. I am here today, not just for Mateo, because I have experienced this in firsthand. I am here for my husband that also suffered from police brutality and also race profiling. This just needs to stop.
Wait, hold on one second, Florencia. Madam City Clerk, does Pablo need to translate that part for the record?
Pablo, can you confirm? Was it? Pablo, can you confirm?
Okay, well, being that he's not confirming, thank you for doing your own translation. You, you don't need to, we do have Pablo here, but, um, okay. Florencia Bell and then Alejandra Godinez.
Hello. My name is Florencia Parada. I have been working for the San Rafael communities, for different family communities in San Rafael and the Canal, also for more than fifteen years. But I'm here as an alumni of the San Rafael Police Citizen Academy. I actually got this here with so many other community members, Latinx community, who did trust the police department. We did trust the actions that the police department told us back in 2018 about building community, building power in communities where the police department will understand what power means and how that is also mean to us as a community members, as an immigrants back in our countries with our own history, with power, oppression. So, as an alumni in the Citizen Academy, and definitely here, again, asking not just for words but for actions. Where is this disqualification policies that we can put in practice? Because I didn't see any de-escalation in these actions. I see the choice of violence. I saw the choice of discriminating once again our community members just for the way they look, the way they speak, the way they just be in our community. We're human beings and we're targets. This is not happening just in July. This is happening for so long. And thus, we as community members are trying to build relationships with the cities of San Rafael where we can be inclusive in our dynamics and conversations and building power in the community. You had to invest in these people. You had to invest in our neighbors. You had to invest in our families, our parents, our children, our boys, our girls who are looking at you, some of them trying to be officers because they want to also have power because they felt how power is oppressing our families daily. We got to stop this. We cannot keep talking about it. There is actions that we need to take. We're begging for that for so long. More than how many years? This is a history and it's still happening. And I respect you all. Racial Cares, you and I have been working since the pandemic, weekly. Not just feeding our community members who are struggling because of the lack of opportunities this county is keep doing, keep doing against our families. You and I have been working constantly in the groundwork doing this, seeing our families struggle. You know that and I trust you. And based on that trust, I beg you and beg all of you to really do something to also hold people accountable. We have to see that there is consequences on this act because you are asking consequences of the act of residence. In the past, they do the same here. We need to act. We need to hold people accountable because of these behaviors cannot keep happening. We need to build relationships with the police, like it or not. We have to do that. But you have to invest on us, be in our community. Chief Bishop did it. Chief Bishop, show leadership, show leadership.
Thank you, Florencia. Belmarco, Alejandra Godinez, and Natalie F.
My name is Belmarco and I live in the West End. On June thirtieth, I was dropped, dropping my friend off after the Marin County Fair and there was an accident in front of her house that was being cleared. And so I drove slowly around and pulled into her driveway. And right behind me comes a cop car with the flashing lights and we were treated like criminals. And I was only trying to ask them what happened. We thought that they were coming to help us or let us know that there was something that we need to worry about in the community. No, they were there to totally lie to us, actually. What they did was very disturbing. They lied. They told me that I had run a red light, blown through a barricade, was speeding, and that I almost killed the tow truck driver. None of this was true, or even close to being true. I asked them to please speak to me in a reasonable manner and that I was only trying to find out what they thought I had done. We were scared out of our wits. It was very confusing as they confused, they accused us of being entitled and said we blew past them because it was convenient for us. They were unreasonably aggressive and treated us like suspects and criminals. We are both senior citizens in our sixties that grew up in Marin and neither one of us have ever experienced anything like this. The after effects of the way we were treated are still with us today. We are both now afraid of the police and don't know who to turn to if we ever need help. We no longer feel safe and protected. I grew up with the knowledge that the police are here to protect and serve the public and I've always felt safe. It seems now that the police are not to be trusted. I understand that not all officers are like this, but the bad ones are eroding this department. This has to change. SRPD and the citizens here need to become allies once again by working together and developing a good relationship between the people and the law enforcement to keep our community safe. We deserve better and so does our once esteemed agency. Thank you.
Thank you, Belle. Alejandra, Natalie, and then Yolanda Barahona.
So I am here asking the chief to not, not listen to us. We are demanding that Officer Nail gets fired. He should not be on the force at all with what has been going on. The fact that they're getting paid, while half of us, if we get injured, we don't get paid. But the fact that they're getting paid out of our taxpayer money to just be home now, I don't think that's okay. Second of all, the police should be like teachers. They should be compassionate, they should be caring, and they should be teaching, not destroying our community, not, you know, violence towards us. Uh, second of all, Canal Alliance also is not a part of the community anymore. They do not care about us as people. They do not care about us. I've gone trying to find help, you know, for rent, for anything, and they turned their backs on us completely. My father-in-law used to work at Canal Alliance when it was Canal Alliance, you know, and he left because it no longer cared about our community. More than anything, everybody is here today because we're angry about what happened. And you guys are here to help us make a difference. We are here believing, putting our trust in you guys because you guys are the ones that set the bills. You guys are the ones that can make a difference. But you guys have to understand, we will be here every day if we have to until a change is made. Central Police should be training SRPD because I feel like SRPD just, if their training is going to what it is right now, I honestly don't even trust them anymore. They, sorry, but you guys aren't doing your jobs. You know, there's just been so much violence. I grew up in Canal, I live in downtown now. We constantly hear the cops going back and forth, but for what? I've been reading on Nextdoor, so much crime going on. Where are the police? You know, you guys need to be here for us as a community. How can we trust you guys? I work with kindergartners and I asked them today, "What would you guys like to be when you grow up?" You know what they said to me? "Not a police." They do not want to be police officers because they are terrified of what could happen to them if they speak up. These are five-year-old kids terrified of becoming police. That should say enough as to what our community has become because it's no longer a community anymore at all.
Thank you. So Natalie F. and then Yolanda, and then Maite Duran.
Hello, my name is Natalie. I am a San Rafael resident who has seen and personally have been met with excessive police force when being pulled over. police force when being pulled over. After watching the body cam videos, I think it was clear that Officer Nail absolutely used excessive force when helping Officer Mazuriegos and putting handcuffs on Mateo. Not only did he lie on his report, but he also took a trophy picture that was unnecessary because there was already another officer taking pictures of the scene. These actions are not only representing their true selves, but they're also representing this department. This was going to get brushed under the rug, but thankfully, we were able to get these videos and now we all get to see what really happened that day. This video clearly shows Mazuriegos asking questions and becoming irritated when Mateo was not being compliant with her demands, when she could see and she could even tell that he needed to stand up to get his wallet. She initiated all of this and when she could have clearly asked in both of their native language what she needed from them. Not only did she allow this to happen, but she also laughed about it when asked what happened. Mateo being met with excessive force was a prime example of how Black, Indigenous, and people of color are treated in this county daily. You don't understand the trauma that comes with the actions that took place that day. Not only do I, but the rest of my community believe that this Officer Nail has no place in policing places like Canal. A community that is 90% Latino, a community that is 90% Latino, has no need for officers to use deadly force like Nail did that day. I truly believe in my heart that these two officers have no right in policing at all after their actions and should be punished to the fullest extent of the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda, Maite, Jonathan Freeman.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Yolanda Barahona y vivo aquí en Marin ya por bastante años, más de 15 años. Participo mucho en la comunidad, en las organizaciones comunitarias y soy miembro de esta comunidad. Me da mucha tristeza que todo esto ha pasado pero también me siento muy indignada porque nuestra comunidad es trabajadora y estoy aquí para apoyar a este trabajador que fue atacado brutalmente por la policía de San Rafael. También quiero expresar que como anteriormente dijeron, este no es un hecho aislado. Es intolerable, no es tolerable que estos incidentes estén repitiendo cada cierto tiempo y cada vez con más frecuencia y con más abuso. Tenemos que parar esto. Nuestra comunidad empuja esta ciudad y este condado y el estado y el país. Somos gente trabajadora, contribuimos con nuestros taxes, tenemos una cultura rica, nos estamos integrando, ustedes también a nosotros. Mis hijos han vivido esta situación de marginación cuando han sido jovencitos, teenagers. ¿Por qué? ¿Solo porque somos de otro color? Me siento mal por esto, me siento muy discriminada. Y hoy, con este caso de Mateo, nosotros nos estamos levantando y nos vamos a seguir levantando y pedimos que ustedes tomen acciones concretas con estos militares para que quede sentado que esto no se puede seguir tolerando. Queremos que se tomen estas acciones contra estos miembros de la policía y que se haga, quizás vale la pena, una currícula nueva de la policía para que se tomen en cuenta que aquí en este país hay diferentes razas, hay diferentes culturas, y todos pertenecemos aquí. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Maite, hold on one moment, Pablo is going to translate.
Well, good evening. My name is Yolanda Barahona and I've been a resident here for many years, maybe more than 15 years now. And I participate in different community activities and organizations and I'm truly saddened by what's happened. We're all here, we're workers, and we're here to support this person who was attacked by police. And like it was mentioned before, this is not an isolated incident. This is something that we see over and over again and every time it gets worse, more violence, it is more violent. And we're here to push this county forward. We help push the state forward and the country. We're here trying to integrate. And we bring a rich culture. And my children, as teenagers, were people that went through this. So they went through this as teenagers. Why? Because we're different colors? And I'm so sad by this. And I think we're all here today to stand together against this militant behavior and actions that have been taking place because we will not tolerate this anymore. You know, maybe the police need new curriculum to help them understand and take into account that here in this country, in this state, there are different races, different ethnicities, different cultures. And I think all this needs to be taken into consideration. So we're all here to fight for this.
Thank you, Pablo. Thank you, Maite.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Maite Duran and like other people here, I have lived in this county for many, many years and I have worked also in the Canal area for over 20 years. So I'm very well acquainted and very integrated to the community of the Canal. I am here to express my support for the victim of police brutality and to say that the reaction of the police was extremely violent and unnecessary over an open container. And for those who are aware of the situation in the Canal, the Canal neighborhood is the most segregated neighborhood in the Bay Area. And that's not anyone's word. It's a document, it's a study. The Canal is historically and chronically underserved and overpoliced. Like other people have said, the Canal needs a lot of services. Has been disinvested for decades and generations. And so incidents like this are not a surprise to anyone. There is a lack of places where somebody can safely consume alcohol, but there's an abundance of liquor stores where people can buy alcohol. This creates a situation where people are forced to drink in public. The police should not be focusing their limited resources on abusive behavior and violence toward hardworking laborers that make this city run. Thank you.
Thank you, Maite. Jonathan Freeman, then Kate Linforth and Nuri Calderon.
Thank you for your attention this evening. Being a member of law enforcement is fraught with tension. It's many unknown situations.
Jonathan, wait, can you start over and put the mic up? Start over, we can't hear you. Wait, reset the timer, Lindsay, there we go.
To be closer, is that it?
Yeah, yeah, a little bit higher.
I'll start over.
Yes.
Being a member of law enforcement means that their lives are fraught with tension, going into unknown situations all the time, difficult to prepare for, the constant stress. I've been on a police ride-along that was tense. Now that said, it means that when you wear blue, it doesn't help. People who are in law enforcement are still, human beings are going to make mistakes like that they did. And it probably goes on much more than we've seen, very unfortunately. So the members of law enforcement need, I think, continual training. I think they need therapeutic support. But so do the Black and Brown people who live in the Canal. On that ride-along, you could see that of the seven cars that were out, four or five of them were in the Canal. There's almost occupation going on in the community of the Canal and it's very difficult to deal with. Community policing means that you get out of the blue suit, you go talk to the people, you find out what they're like, feel that they're real people. It doesn't just end with the Black and Brown folks. I know several white folks, good friends, who have actually been wrongly arrested. We've heard a story tonight, people have been mistreated and that simply has to stop. I'm a candidate for the San Rafael City Council and whether I'm not elected, and I will at least win second place. I'm calling for a community review board of the police department. I think it's very important that we have, there are many models that exist to keep it out of being political. It needs to cover all aspects and has to follow, I think, the tenets of restorative justice as practiced by the youth transforming justice, who now see probably 60 to 70% of their clients are people of Latino. And I'm on that board and I'm very concerned that these kids are growing up into a harsher environment and it changes them in a traumatic way. So I know you all will be doing good things. We need a community review board and I will be working very hard to make sure that we have it.
Thank you. Next up, Kate Linforth, then Nuri Calderon, and then Tiffany Pham.
Hello, I'm Kate Linforth and I'm here on behalf of Indivisible Marin. That's a San Rafael-based organization of 3,500 people, committed to take action to create a more just, caring, and inclusive America. And we want justice for Mateo and accountability for the officers who abused him. We ask that the incident be fully investigated and the findings be made public. We feel incitement, overpolicing, and unnecessary use of force are not acceptable and not to be tolerated in San Rafael Police Department and that officers Mazuriegos and Nail must be appropriately reprimanded for their antagonistic behavior, unwarranted violence, and lying on the police report. As well, and maybe more importantly, we need to improve the system that enabled this conduct. That video reeked of this being a systemic issue. It's critical that we institute a civilian oversight committee with subpoena power to ensure proper checks and balances of local law enforcement. And that's just to create a healthy institution. We do it in the United States, why wouldn't we want to do it in our police department? While we appreciate the policing is difficult and dangerous job, we must do all, we must, we must do what it takes to make sure that San Rafael is a place for all citizens to be treated fairly and with respect. And we're, we're going to fight for this.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you. Nuri, Tiffany, and then Ashley Allen.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Nuri Calderon. I'm currently a senior in high school and I want to confront the disparities in the Canal area of Marin, home to an estimated 15,000 people, approximately 26% of San Rafael's population. I know because I live in the Canal neighborhood. These disparities include broadband access, where 45% of survey respondents in the Canal said it was difficult to connect to the internet as an urban heat zone where Latino neighborhoods face 6.7 degrees hotter infrastructure, as 30% of households are experiencing crowding, 2 more people per room is experienced by 9% of Canal residents. Sanitation and pests, we can find cockroaches in the middle of the night, throw all over our food, even our public health. The Canal's 20% positivity rate is triple that of the rest of Marin, according to the county public officer, Dr. Matt Willis. All of these issues are interrelated today. I'd like to focus on the justice we saw with Mateo, how there can be improvement with SRPD. This isn't the first time we see injustice with our community of color and specifically low-income folks, where first responders such as cops aren't well-trained and immediately perceive brown skin as a threat. We all lose. When we all win, we support from the bottom up. We all win when those hired and paid to protect us de-escalate situations. We all win when we work together to make problems smaller, not bigger. We all win when 100% of police officers are trained to build connections and bridges between Hispanic and Latina communities, the very people that ensure Marin's law and our landscape, its cars are repaired and its houses are cleaned. We all win when we're held accountable so that what happened to Mateo doesn't happen ever again and we can live in a county where we all feel safe and protected. Thank you.
Thank you, Nuri. Okay, Tiffany Pham, Ashley Allen, and Saul G.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Tiffany Pham. I'm currently a senior in high school and today I want to talk about the inequality in Canal compared to other parts of Marin County. The Canal is home to around 1,500 residents and is also home for me and my family. It is also one of the most densely populated areas to live in. Near the Canal, we have the Smart Train, which most people are familiar with. The train was promised to start running in 2010 with 70 miles of rails, but instead it overshot the predicted date and started in 2017 with only 45 miles of rails. That's seven years late and 35% shorter than promised. Plus, it went over the predicted amount it took to build, which was $450 million to $691 million. The annual projected operating cost was around $17 million. But according to the Smart Train's budget reports for the years 2020 and 21, it was well over $20 million, 18% over budget. The taxpayers in Marin and Sonoma counties are also paying $30 million or more per year until Measure Q expires, which won't be until eight or more years. The additional costs and other funding for the project equates to well over the $500 million it took to build it. Instead, it totals around $1.5 billion. This amount of money could have been used to improve parts of Marin, like the Canal, to help fund public schools that are seriously underfunded and in need of resources, and to provide de-escalation training for public officers to prevent instances that happen to Mateo in the future. Areas like the Canal have many issues, such as overcrowding that are long overdue to be solved, and the money that was put into the Smart Train could help solve these problems. As our elected officials in service of the entire San Rafael community, I ask that you all can think about how the city manages its budget and prioritize areas that need the money more than others. That is true equity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tiffany. Thank you, Tiffany. Ashley and Saul.
Hello, my name's Ashley Ann Allen. I actually grew up in the Canal area and I grew up in the Canal area during the 90s when it was really bad and dangerous for us. And what I don't understand is how San Rafael PD could fall so far from grace. I attended Camp Chance as a kid living in the Canal area when the police officers were trying their best to have relationships within our community. And the video footage that I saw today was something that I never thought within my 33 years of life would ever witness SRPD doing. I used to be proud of the fact that we had such good relationships that I thought that I perceived within the Canal area because we always had the same officers driving through our neighborhood who actually tried to get to know us. I grew up just down the street from Bahia Vista and I remember how scary it was and I remembered calling the police officers when we needed help. And now I just, I feel afraid. Just not too long ago, at the beginning of the Just not too long ago, at the beginning of this year, I was a victim of road rage, and when the police were called to respond to my incident, they treated me as if I was the one who was assaulting the individual. I was shoved down, and I was treated with aggression, and I did not understand why I was being handled in such a regard. If you're calling the police because you need help, you should be met with dignity. If there isn't an incident that's occurring, then why are the police responding, especially in this incidence, this individual does not want to be named, this individual that's going by Mateo? Like, in that area, the canal area, it's so peaceful, like, I don't care how many times I've biked past there, I have never felt unsafe by individuals drinking right there. Like, we know that by the bay, people like to drink and relax and like to hang out after work. I don't know why SRPD had any business being there. Like, they have other things that they could attend to. I don't know why we have to sit there and witness people harassing people, just having downtime after their work. I'm appalled by this. I don't think that those people should be employed any further by our community. If I was working at Toys R Us still, if they were still in business, and I treated a customer like that, I would have lost my job on the spot. So I don't understand why, working in retail, we can't have that same type of oversight for our police department. Like, why do I have to be held to such a high standard when I have to cash out your groceries, but if you're serving my community, for safety reasons, you're gonna be that way? I don't understand it, but thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ashley. Saul?
Hello, my name is Saul Godinez. I am the proud son of Saul Godinez, who was a very phenomenal leader in the canal community. I'm here to bring light to the recent events in which excessive force and a man was beaten and wrongfully humiliated. This video, that I hope many of you have gotten the chance to see, shows how police brutality unfolds in a matter of seconds. No questions asked, just a smack. I am appalled and the behavior and the lack of professionalism was not okay. It was disgusting, and it was heartbreaking to see that video. That is a community member, and personally, Mateo is a friend of mine. I want to see those officers fired. I don't want to see any retraining. It's not gonna help. You need to make an example out of them. You need to show us that you guys are listening, not just nodding your heads. This is not gonna allow, and we're not gonna allow it to happen. There was no need for any of that to escalate. The gentleman needed to present his identification, and a language barrier was presented, and nothing was done about that. Only action and force was taken. At the end of that video, you saw that man, humanity, be stripped away like nothing. He was made a mockery, and the falsification of that report proves that. As members of the community, we are expected to follow laws. These officers are no different. The only thing is that they get to carry a badge and a gun and enforce them. You guys follow them as well as we do. They are entrusted to uphold the law and not bend it to their own will or to their amusement, as shown in the video. The bad will always outweigh the good, and unfortunately, we are seeing that today. We need to make a change for the wholesome of the community to benefit all the people, so that we can all become a community and feel like we are all safe again. One more thing, and I know my time's up, but please, listen to the community, allow a vote of who we want, us as the Latinos and the Latinx, the organizations, allow us to vote and select those who will aid for change, because the ones that you have mentioned will be selective on the cases that they seem, that they deem fit to help. Please, allow us to vote on that with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Saul. I know there are more cards. Madam city clerk, do you want to bring those over? And I did have a card from Susan Zalinski, but that's part of the consent agenda, so we're staying in the open time right now. So, okay. I'm sorry, I can't hear what you're saying. Okay, yeah, that's it. So the question is, how much, thank you, I understand the question. So, public open time is as long as our community has something they want to share with us. That is what we are doing this evening. And so we have more cards, and there might be people who have not put cards in, and they'll be able to speak, and we have the virtual. So that's how it is. I wish I could tell you how long it will take. It'll take the time that we need to take. As I said, my opening comments, if by ten, ten-thirty, we're still having public open time, we will continue the business portion of the meeting, so we can check in again at nine PM, but we're gonna keep listening. So with that, I'm going to have Brenda, sorry, Brenda Camarena, Angel Gomez, and Cindy Diaz. So Brenda, why don't you come down?
Buenas noches a todos. Good evening, everyone. Hello, Rachel. Hello, Kate. Hello, Micah, and everyone else here that I don't know, but I know all of you, and we have done work together. I can't even talk. My name is Brenda Camarena, as many as you know. As a Latina leader, a longtime Marin County resident in this community, I'm standing here representing Mateo and many others who have been affected by the abuse of power. The crime committed by the police officers involved needs to be prosecuted. We're not here to ask, we're here to demand what needs to be done, and you know what needs to be done. What message are we sending our children? What message are we sending our youth? I see your agenda. You're addressing mental health, suicide prevention? Hispanic Heritage Month? Let me remind you, the Canal Alliance and the Multicultural Center of Marin, agencies that you mentioned earlier today, I work for them, but they do not represent that community. Let me make it very clear, and I hope you understand the level of damage that has happened and that continues to happen. You also mentioned healing. Healing will take place, and we will work towards that when justice is served.
Thank you, Brenda. Angel Gomez, Cindy Diaz, and Gabriel Garcia.
My name is Angel Gomez. I am a part of the new generation of Hispanics, and I want to express my frustration and anger about this situation. Like others have said, this isn't the first time this has happened. With my people, this has happened countless times, and it has to stop. I demand the police officers who were involved to be fired, and that the officers and trainees should be trained properly to use their authority to help us, because quite frankly, right now, they are against us when they should be helping us. Where's the justice? Where's our freedom? There is none of that in the system. And are y'all even listening to our pain and suffering to the system? The new and up-and-coming generation is not going to be put up through, put through this anymore. We have had enough. Change needs to happen now, and it needs to, and it needs to happen now. The new generation of Latinos is fed up with all this nonsense. Today is Mateo, then tomorrow, who will it be? Who will be the next victim to this corrupt system? This cannot happen again, and we have been in this courtroom countless times for the same situation. And here we are again, fighting for our rights and our freedom, but there is still no change. I've seen family, friends, my own parents, even I, we have all been victims to this system. This is all, this all has to stop. You all in power should be, should be with us, but where is our help? Where's our justice? Where are our benefits? Because I don't see it. It's not in sight.
Thank you, Angel. Oh, you're still going, okay.
This has happened countless times, like I said. And you all, all of you, may or may not have seen me, but this change has to happen now. Younger generations, innocent children, kids, have been arrested because of your lack of authority, lack of knowledge, lack of everything that your police officers have. Even I have been a victim to this. Dearly beaten, abused by police officers, handcuffed unjust, I'm not gonna stand for this anymore. You guys have to make, you guys have to make change, and it has to happen now.
Thank you, Angel. So, Cindy Diaz, Gabriel Garcia, and Cesar Legliva.
Hello, everyone. Sorry, I'm trying to hold back my tears. I'm here because six months ago, my sixty-year-old father was beaten by the police as well. I have the documents here. It hurt my heart to see my father with scrapes and bruises on his face, his elbows and his shoulders. I had to bail him out of jail because I couldn't stand seeing him like that. Today, I'm standing here because of my dad, because of Mateo, and because of everyone that's been a victim of this. Our community needs respect. We are the ones that are babysitting your children. We are the ones that are cleaning your houses. We are the ones, we are the ones that are cooking in these restaurants when it's a hundred degrees outside. We are the ones that are cleaning your gardens. We are the ones that are fixing your plumbing systems. And today, I stand before you because our community needs justice. My father needs justice. Mateo needs justice, and we really have to stop this systematic racism that exists in this country, in this county, and it's a shame that, you know, it has come down to this. It's, I, I'm sorry, I'm trying, I've been holding my tears back this whole time back there because it just hurts me so much to see this. It's not the first time that it's happened. I saw it with my own eyes. I saw my sixty-year-old, sixty-two-year-old frail father. He is very, very thin, and I just can't, I reached out to the police officers and asked for a statement from them, and they gave me a statement. Unfortunately, I believed it, because, you know, they are the officers, and I thought my father probably had a can of beer in his hand and was, you know, I don't know, I believed it, but after seeing these videos, like, I want a thorough investigation with what's happened with my father too, because, like I said, he's sixty-two years old, and it broke my heart, seeing all the scrapes, the bruises on his face. It's not okay, and we need to stand together, like I said, because we are a community. We are the ones that are watching your children, babysitting your children. We are the ones that are cleaning your houses. We are the ones that are drafting your capital improvement plans, because some of us, the first-generation people, have gone to school, and we have somehow managed to get out of that oppression that we've faced our whole lives.
Thank you, Cindy. Angel, oh wait, I think I got out of order. Sorry, Gabrielle, go ahead.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Gabriel Huina Garcia. Soy un miembro de la comunidad del canal. Creo que algunos me conocen. Y estoy aquí porque lo que ha pasado dentro de nuestra comunidad es muy indignante. No tiene nombre lo que pasó. Pienso de que nosotros como comunidad tenemos un derecho grande. Hay derechos, hay leyes. Somos lo mismo ante la ley. Y vemos ahora que los derechos de Mateo fue golpeado. ¿Qué pasa con esa filosofía de que somos iguales ante la ley? ¿Existe realmente eso o es un chiste? Yo creo que la comunidad ahora está cansado de que las cosas sean simplemente similado. Ya no queremos eso. Yo creo que esto, lo que pasó fue grave. Queremos que esto se lleve una investigación más profunda y que el reporte que se hizo, cambiando el reporte, eso hace ver de que no tenemos confianza en la autoridad. ¿Cómo podemos confiar cuando nos mienten? No podemos confiar. No somos incluidos, somos excluidos. Yo creo que es importante de hacer los cambios ahora y ya no esperar. Estamos cansados de eso. Hemos sido discriminados desde varias fases, educacional, salud, políticamente, pero ustedes saben de que somos una fuerza laboral y económica. Si ustedes hacen una suma de toda la cantidad de dinero que viene del canal, es una cantidad fuerte. Nadie, nadie habla de eso. Entonces pedimos respeto, igualdad, y que este oficial sea procesado y juzgado como cualquiera de nosotros si cometiéramos un error. Quiero finalizar, que si alguna persona yo golpeará a una autoridad, ¿cuántos años de cárcel me esperaría a mí? How many years? Entonces, esta investigación tiene que ser desde el DA, el jefe de policía, qué es lo que verdaderamente pasó, queremos saberlo. Y como lo han escuchado ustedes, de que queremos que escuchen a los líderes. Estas instituciones que están ahorita, que han mencionado, Canal Alliance, Multicultural Center, no están con la gente, no han hecho nada por la gente, han hecho algo por sus propios intereses. Quiero que nos escuchen, señor alcaldesa Kate Cohen, que también tiene un rol muy importante en este proceso, y queremos ver su participación. Gracias.
Thank you, Gabrielle. Wait. I think. Going to have Pablo.
Well, good evening. My name is Gabriel, and I'm a community member here, and I think some of you know me. And what has happened here is really unacceptable. There are laws that we all have to face, and doesn't the law say that we're all equal in front of it? Well, what equality has existed with this act? Is this a joke to you all? We... We need to stop simulating and pretending. We want to see action. It's really a disgrace what has happened. And I think there needs to be a deeper and more complete and full investigation. And what is this about the report that was made and was made public that the officer was trying to change the report, his initial report? How are we going to trust you when you're showing us otherwise? And I think this doesn't show us that we're being included. We're not, we're excluded. And I think we need to make change now, not later, not wait. And I think we've been discriminated, discriminated against in many different facets in this community. Education, health, even politically. You all know, we're here as laborers, a lot of us. And the amount of money that is produced out of the Canal area is large. I don't think that's ever mentioned. We need equality. Finally, if a person, say, if I strike an officer, a police officer, how many years of jail time await me? Think about that. So, I want a fuller, more complete investigation. I want to hear from the DA what really happened. I want us to listen to our leaders here. These institutions, the Canal Alliance and the Multicultural Center, they don't do anything with our interest in mind. They do it for their own gains. And I think you, Mayor Collins, play a big role in this as well. So, we want to see you, we want to hear from you as well. We want to see you participate in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Pablo. César, Edward Reski, and then Salama Lox.
Good evening. I want to really try to get to the point and be very direct about my comments tonight. I'm here tonight to let you know that the business as usual mentality in practice has to end, it will end tonight. I'm a lifelong San Rafael resident, grew up in the Canal, and also survivor of police brutality. And this is not a new problem. This is a persistent pervasive problem that has been swept under the rug for decades. So, I just wanted to simply say that the business as usual that's been going on for decades has not worked. And we need to figure out a way to do something radically different. So, the first order of business that we want to, I will encourage you to think about is a direct communication and conversation and bringing these folks, my folks, my people, to the table and developing a relationship that's going to arrive at very concrete, meaningful solutions. I, while I respect a lot of nonprofits who do the good work and, uh, for the people, in service of the people, they are not the spokesperson for the community. So, I just want to hammer that point. They are just a representative voice who benefit from the folks like me and many residents in the community. So, I just want to just honor that and I just want to just state out, out loud. So, the paradigm of looking at something different is this. I will, I will challenge you. I will encourage you. I will beg, I will get to my knees for you to please step outside of your ivory towers and building to please begin to develop relationships with the people of the Canal resi- of the Canal community. Okay? Get, get uncomfortable. It's okay. Get uncomfortable. Okay? We've been uncomfortable, we've been struggling for many years. And I just want to just be able to make sure that before we arrive at any healing circles, any, any town hall meetings and forums and listening sessions, we want to be sure first that we are sitting at the table dictating the terms of what the process is going to look like. Okay? Towards meaningful solutions. You don't tell us what you're going to do. We are going to ask you, demand of you, that we need this, and it is up to you to facilitate that for and with us. We will work in concert and partnership with you. But we want co-equal partnership with you. Okay? I'm, I'm done with the business as usual, behind-the-door conversations, backdoor predetermined decisions have already been made. And for y'all to come out here and just simply let folks know that that's, you've listened, but that is a checklist box that you listened. Okay? So, I just want to just clarify the ground rules. And our last point, I just want to make sure that we're clear here. There is no substantial or, or meaningful change in the absence of accountability. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, thank you, César. I think it was Edward Reski and then Salama. Oh, okay. Nope, Salama, go ahead. No, no, because there's simultaneous translation for those folks that are listening in Spanish.
Madam Mayor and council members, Salama Lox, a resident of Terolinda. And I observed that video, that Channel 7 video, and was just... I can't speak about how horrible it was. I'd like to speak to the chief spiller that the whole incident was initiated on a false present, pre- falsely because VC twenty-three, two-two-two only occurs in vehicles, not people sitting on the sidewalk relaxing. That's open, open container. And so, the, the, the initial meeting was already wrong. The second thing was, I like to say, to a hammer, everything is a nail and it pounds it. The second assault was when the second officer arrived. And I have observed this kind of interaction where the second officer, no matter what, is on alert to attack. Period. Because he assumes that there's a problem with the partner and he has to be ready to back it up. I have observed that kind of dyad working over and over. There needs to be education. First, there needs to be accountability and firing and all of that, as the community has said. But there needs to be education. Uh, the last time I was here, I praised the Alternative Response Pilot Program. I want to be part of that program. That is, I want to be part of the, how you're planning to initiate that and the teachings and so forth. Because definitely there needs to be communication skills training. There needs to be situation analysis, how to diffuse and not to escalate. That situation was escalated from the start. Escalation from the start. Also, there should have been immediate care intervention. Once he was bleeding, how come there wasn't gauze and gloves and all of that done, which I think you guys carry on you? And supposed to be minimizing injury. I'm a health professional, so that is my focus. And I didn't see any of that. They spoke of his humanity. It was a hammer hammering nails. That's all it was. And that starts with the teaching, the communication, and the whole culture of the police department. You have to go to all of your officers and say, "We're changing the culture." Period. And then you need to say, and when, if you're not changing the culture, if you're doing as you did the last ten years, you're going to be accountable and there will be consequences. And you need to say what those consequences are. And we would like to know what those consequences are. And I think Mr. Mateo needs to file charges against the officer that actually punched him. File charges against him.
Thank you, Salama. Thank you, Salama.
Thank you.
So, Edward Reski and then Cristina Godinez.
Um... I guess, I, first is, I think it's apparent that I'm a white guy. I said, I, I think it's apparent that I'm a white guy. I know people of color and I know people who are white as I am. I can tell you, I've listened to these folks since seven o'clock this evening. And I have no white acquaintance who has ever experienced anything even being a shadow of what these folks have been talking about. Nothing. There... Or I know the comments that were made, uh, to the public when this first happened or once it was, came out was, "This does not represent the San Rafael Police Department." Well, I, I, with all due respect, I don't buy it. Uh, nor do I buy the thing we hear all over the nation that there are a few bad apples. In my opinion, what we see is a toxic culture of police superiority, bigotry, arrogance, and power. And... You could see it, you could see that endemic part of the department. Just watch the video. It isn't just the beating of the, beating of the gentleman. It was the way those three men were treated from the get-go that showed that they had no humanity. They didn't exist. I salute Damon Connolly for his outspoken condemnation. I'm beat. I tell you, I am dismayed that there, that kind of public condemnation is not all over this Marin County. Where, where is this? It's silent. I ask for, well, a lot of things, I'll list four, and then I'll conclude, please. As these, these folks have discussed, true accountability for these officers. Strong, independent civilian oversight. Not just the Sheriff's Department, not just the San Rafael Police Department, but every law enforcement agency in this county. And I want to go farther than that. In my opinion, oversight should not be reviewed. It shouldn't be after the fact. What, let's investigate what happened? That should happen as well. But there's got to be civilian-led and department participation in a sea change in this toxic culture that we're seeing. It's apparent to me in San Rafael and it's all over the nation. It's got to stop. Um, there needs to be a zero tolerance for overpolicing and bigotry. Not just violence and beating the crap out of somebody. You don't need zero tolerance for that, that'll be common sense. But zero tolerance for treating civilians the way these three gentlemen were treated. Number four. The gentleman, who I don't know and many of these folks do, who's simply being called Mateo in the, in the press, that he be fully compensated for not only his physical and emotional injuries, but for his obvious loss of income that's going to occur. And God knows the city of San Rafael and the San Rafael Police Department cannot do anything to restore this gentleman's dignity that was stripped from him and placed on the public to see.
Thank you, Edward. Thank you for your comment. Cristina? Cristina?
My name is Cristina Godinez, and I have lived in the Canal area of San Rafael my entire life. I have witnessed the police fail the Canal community all my life, years. Innocent, hard-working people who are trying to provide for their families. How am I supposed to feel safe if the very people who swear to protect me are the very people who have the power to harm or worse and get away with it? No matter what I do, no matter, no matter how much I follow what white people deem as acceptable, I am still brown and a product of Mexican immigrants. What I take my pride in is what these cops will deem as a good enough excuse to treat me less than human. When I saw the video, it broke my heart and lessened my hope for this community. When I saw the, to see Mr. Mateo, who is someone my size, be brutally and senselessly beaten, makes me think, what could happen to me? Daisy is someone I'm supposed to be safe with, not as only as a Latina, a Spanish speaker, but also as a woman. So, how can I trust the San Rafael Police Department? This is not right, and I know you know it is not right. We are not here for you guys to take notes. We are real people with feelings and dignity. This is our lives. You can't fully understand our frustration, but please help make it right. You need to make this right, and not only for Mateo, but for everyone, every single dignified and righteous person in this room. Every person who had to leave work to be here. Every person who had to witness or experience this brutality. There is no right, and just fix that. There needs to be an investigation of SRPD because of Brandon Neal and Daisy Masariegos, along with many other members of the force, were comfortable not only with the violence, but the lies and jokes that happened on July twenty-seventh. Then there is bound to be more cases of injustice. How many times does this country, a country founded and built on life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, how many times must this country fail us for you to bring justice? How many times? To finalize, Neal and Masariegos need to be charged with aggravated assault and perjury because they are under oath. Thank you.
Thank you, Cristina. Uh, Madam State Clerk, do we have additional cards? Okay. We have, okay. Uh, Ariely and then Danielle and then Eva. So... Ariely? Oh.
My name is Ariely. I have been a member of the Canal community since I was seven years old. And I work very closely with families and children of the Canal community. As brown people in Marin County, we know what pressure feels like. Pressure to be so-called good immigrants and work until we're dead. Pressure to not even slightly inconvenience someone unless we're willing to die for it. To prove our worthiness of basic respect and human rights because it's just not a given for us. When I saw the video of Mateo being disrespected and struck, I saw our uncles, brothers, dads, cousins, and neighbors who work all day in the sun and come home with calluses. People who just want to relieve the pressure of being brown in Marin County. And what better way to do that than having a cold beer with your friends? Not to mention, people like Mateo wouldn't have to drink in public if we had affordable housing and living wages in Marin. If your officers were competent enough to work with people, they could have let Mateo off with a warning. However, footage of the encounter overtly displays lack of competency. Incompetent employees get fired. Not to mention their thirst for the slightest feeling of power. I know I am speaking for my community when I say we don't want officers like Masariegos and Niall terrorizing our communities. We explicitly demand for them to be fired. I was told that the incident is under investigation. However, sources have told us that not everyone in the department has even watched the footage. Not to mention, the report was full of lies. We demand a third-party investigation, or at least for the footage to be shown to the entire department. And again, we demand for Daisy and Brandon to be fired. There is no reason why our taxes should be funding, should be funding violence against our own people.
Thank you, Ariely.
Danielle, Eva, and then Doma Suarez.
Hi. Um, I'm here just to say that, let's all recognize that, you know, white people... that, you know, white people are listened to more in this community than Latinx people who are actually doing the fucking work. And I’m just here to say, you need to listen to them. You have to listen to them. If you do not actually put in the work and hold yourselves accountable and hold the Police Department accountable. I’ve done work for police departments like this. I’ve led trainings. I’ve written the materials for trainings. And you know what? They never get to the officers. Because it looks good on paper, but you don’t actually put it in practice. Because that would be too much work. And I just want to say, not only do you have to listen to the community, they have been begging you to listen for the past, what, hour and a half? They will keep going because they have to. It is survival for them. This is your job. This is life or death for them. That’s my comment.
Thank you, Danielle. Eva, and then Doma Suarez.
My name is Eva Crisanti, and I have been investigating your Police Department for the last eighteen months at least. I’ve been running CPRAs on issues with the City Council. And I want to let people know just how corrupt this Police Department is. I want to explain that the problem isn’t just with the police officers. It’s you guys. You guys. And when I point out how white you are, Kate Collins takes offense. And then she gets people that she appoints to say that I’m being unfair. But there’s a very stark racial disparity. Now, for over fourteen months, well, no, for fourteen months, I tried to get nonprofits to do so much as write a letter of complaint to the County Health Department regarding the police-run, majority-black and Latino homeless internment camp that you were running under a freeway. This was a medically vulnerable population. I can give this whole spiel in my sleep because I’ve given it at almost every City Council meeting. Almost. I think I’ve missed like four or five in fourteen months. And I’ve given it at almost every Board of Supervisors meeting. And now those people have been cast out onto the street. Yesterday was one hundred and seven degrees. I don’t know where Skeeet is. I don’t know where Juliana is. I don’t know how these people are doing. I rode over here from Berkeley in the heat because I needed to tell people that if you need information about what the city attorney here is doing, what the city manager here is doing, please contact me. I’ve been running CPRAs. All of that is free to you. I’m happy to share it.
What is your name?
My name is Eva Crisanti. And, and I want to also say that, you know, this could have been prevented, this beating of Mateo could have been prevented if you had listened once to me about Lynn Murphy and about the culture of corruption within SRPD. Every time I came here and made a complaint like that, I was dismissed. I was mocked. It’s unacceptable. I also want to point out that your city attorney’s office sent me a letter when I said it’s inappropriate for your police officers to constantly turn on, turn on and off their body cam. Your city attorney sent me a letter saying that it’s perfectly acceptable with the city for them to do that. They cited Lexipol policy, which says the opposite. That is the perfect encapsulation of the city government. They cited a Lexipol policy that said, “Don’t turn it on and off,” and then you, and then you said, “And that’s why it’s okay for them to do it.” I have so much want to say.
Thank you for your comments. Doma Suarez? It might be, you can speak at either microphone. Doesn’t matter. It just looked like that one looked low for people.
Chief, I want to read you an email that I got from a friend today from Boise, Idaho. What is going on with the brutal and stupid San Rafael police? Made the national news in Marin. How embarrassing for you, for the city of San Rafael, and for you, Mayor, and all of you council members. How is this okay? It’s not. It even made international news in the UK, where I have friends that lived in this town and are, one of the reasons why they left this town back to the UK. Chief, can you address the trophy photo that was taken of Mateo twenty minutes later after the incident? Can you confirm what happened to that photo? Is that photo now within officers’ nails, friends, and families? What happened to that photo? Is that going to be in the investigation? We need answers. Council, what are you going to do about trophy photos? How are you going to address this? And what policy will you create so this does not happen again? What are you going to do? We are watching you. We are tired. Your officer, chief, came in like this was a war zone. It was not. Your officers are creating one. And we are getting tired. Do you want this to be a war zone? Train better. We are looking at you. We know your name, and we know where to find you. This needs to change. We need to, we need to, we need to address this as soon as possible. You have broken the little trust that you had built with the community. You are done.
Thank you, Doma. Okay, I don’t have any more cards, but you didn’t have to fill out a card if you wanted to speak. So if you would like to address the council, come on down. And just, if you could say your name would be helpful. And you’ll have your two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Holly Middleton. I am a citizen of San Rafael. I know the men in the video. They remodel our houses. They prepare our food. They take care of our gardens. They work hard, long hours for little pay. Then they send the bulk of the money to help ease the unimaginable poverty back home that their families are experiencing in Guatemala, Mexico, Salvador. As an ESL teacher, I taught hundreds of men just like them in my ESL classes at College Marin. What I witnessed in this video was our local peace officers treating a group of immigrants not as folks who needed a reminder about the law, but as other, as criminals from the get-go. Their crime: drinking beer outdoors with their coworkers. This was clearly not a dangerous situation. To me, the one-sided violence seemed completely unmotivated and pointlessly cruel. It’s hard to imagine the officers treating a bunch of white construction workers drinking Coors after work the same way, with hostility and quickly escalating violence. I just can’t imagine that happening, can you? The question I’m asking myself is, since Officer Masariegos speaks Spanish, why didn’t she attempt to de-escalate the situation? Especially with the clearly aggressive Officer Neal when, when he approached? I don’t understand this. Our police officers are supposed to keep the peace in our community. And if they’re not being trained to use all the tools at their disposal, including, including cultural and language skills to de-escalate conflicts, why aren’t they? Why aren’t they using these skills? Until this unnecessary use of force is fully investigated, I believe Officers Masariegos and Neal should be removed from active duty. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Buenas noches, señora alcaldía pública. Mi nombre es Luto Calderón. Soy un líder comunitario guatemalteco. Me preocupa la situación de estos dos elementos de la policía. Sabemos, va, de que no todos los policías son malos, pero estos dos policías, si vemos su historial, sus récords, han tenido más de un accidente. Pienso que ya no deben estar en esta corporación porque en lugar de tener esa confianza con la policía nos va a dar miedo. Ya no van a tener esa comunicación. Queremos, va, que ustedes actúen, verdad, en una forma transparente, que nuestra comunidad esté contenta. Usted escuchó, verdad, la mayoría. Son jóvenes que se expresaron, va, de esa mala actitud de estos elementos. Y queremos, va, que por favor, se haga una justicia. Y queremos que remueven estos dos elementos. Gracias.
Thank you. One moment while Pablo translates.
Good evening. And my apologies that did not catch the first name. Last name is Calderón. And I’m Guatemalan. And I’m here to just express my concern with this issue that has been presented to us regarding the police. And like has been said before, this is not an accident that’s happened once. It’s happened many times. And, you know, I don’t think they should be part of this corporation. Instead of us trusting them, they’re creating more fear within us with them. And as you’ve heard from the youth today, it’s the youth that have expressed a lot of this fear. They’ve expressed themselves. We want justice, and we want these two individuals to be removed from this corporation. Thank you.
Thank you. Come down.
Hello there. My name is Gabriel, and I grew up in San Rafael. People have made some wonderful, insightful comments on behalf of the Canal community in regards to inequity and segregation in San Rafael, showing perpetual under support through statistics, through lived experiences, and more. And I just wanted to back all of that up and say that I have personally also seen the stark contrast of race and socioeconomic status going through the public school here and just living. That if this one singular video, because I’m also here to support Mateo, that if this one singular video is experience of the result of two cops graduating through the SRPD, then there is something simply wrong, systematically speaking. It doesn’t exist in a silo. So if that is the case, we need to do something to structurally change San Rafael. Not only the Police Department, but everything else. Daisy, Daisy Masariegos’ response was apathetic. Brandon Neal’s physical response to this was uglier. And the aftermath was even more telltale to all of us. The contemptuous laughing, his smirking, and him taking a picture of Mateo after the fact all shows us the things that we needed to see. I think he said something along the lines of, “Thank you, Daisy, for giving you such good use of force experiences.” That is absurd. This guy simply sees his job as a potential medium to express his own racism and hatred. And he’s right. He has all the evidence in the world of police brutality across this country, disproportionately brutalizing people of color to back up that ideology. So while mending the other wounds of equity in this county and city, we demand that right now, you meet the Canal’s needs and address this policing situation in a meaningful way from the ground up and fire those officers. After that, let’s keep on progressing and make this city what it deserves to be and give the Canal what it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriel.
Hello. Good evening. Good evening, council members. Good evening, Chief Spiller. We are just tired of the same systemic oppression and brutality from police force. What has happened to Mateo has not been the first, as you know it. The list goes in on and on, in San Rafael and in Marin County wide. And it won’t be the last unless you stop it. I ask why the authorities who are here to serve us and protect us are so dehumanizing? What is the purpose of this? By criminalizing people of color in such a humane way? Why? To get rid of us? This creates trauma and anger. And then you wonder why people take it to the streets and why people are enraged. There is no place of belonging. Don’t forget the history. This land belonged to the coastal Miwok people. And the Europeans took it away. And what remains is the racism and white privilege that dominates access. So now you want to beat a gardener caring for the land? Officer Neal took a picture. Was this his trophy? The police, the other police officers comment as if to be made proud, as if this was their training ground. People aren’t your puppets to punch around before you sleep at night. And your conscience speaks to you. What is your leadership? And where do you stand? Do you have integrity and willpower? The truth is clear. Do you stand with violence, or do you stand with justice? Justice for Mateo. Justice for people of color. Let’s have an oversight committee and stop the white-privileged racism terrorizing our people from existing and making them invisible as if they are nothing. Let’s co-create justice. Because when you’re ready, we are more than ready. We are tired. This has got to end. So let’s start a new beginning.
Thank you. Wait, did you make comments already?
I did, but I just.
Can you email me?
No. You guys are here, and you’re getting paid now. So to add on to my earlier comment, it just amazes me to see how quick the chief responded on Friday, September 2nd, during our march rally, right after. If he really cared, he would have held them accountable the moment he became aware and let the public know what had happened. We can see who really cares and who only wants to be there for the paycheck. We need change for our kids, for us, the people who have dealt with this as kids as well. We, the community, want Neal fired. As for Daisy, she can probably be retrained. But I can guarantee you that the community will no longer welcome her. Because we were proud of her when she became a police officer. She turned her back on us, the community that she grew up with. And I can guarantee you that if Officer Sanchez would have taken that call, it would have ended differently. Because he’s trying to make a change, unlike her.
Thank you. So anyone who hasn’t commented yet, yeah, come on down.
Okay. Hi. My name is Adriana. I’m a Marin County resident. And unfortunately, it doesn’t surprise me to see the events that happened in the video with Mateo. It hurts as well that people had to witness the assault of a community, a community member to see that cops don’t protect or keep the community safe. This isn’t the first time we see police officers abusing their power because this is a systemic problem. The racist and bias in the police system is so inherently deeply rooted. It’s an inherently racist system. So it doesn’t surprise me to see that a community member got assaulted and we see police officers abusing their power when they easily could de-escalate the situation. Like I said, cops don’t keep the community safe. The community keeps us safe. I demand that you fire the cops and provide full transparency of the investigation that’s happening. I demand the stop of overpolicing in the Canal community. And if it wasn’t Mateo, it would have been someone else in the community. If it’s not one person, it’s another. If it’s not one name, it’s another. And this is not going to stop until the money is put in the community and not police training. And I really hope after tonight, the community stays angry and they keep advocating for safer communities. We need to defund the police and put money into resources for the people. The safest communities don’t have most cops. They have the most resources. We need to defund the police and defend the most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you, Adriana. So, anyone else? We also have a virtual community, but I think we’ll do is probably take a break before we go to them. But sir. before we go to them, but anyone else in the room that would like to? Yeah, so traditionally, everyone just gets their two minutes, but I, but, yeah, go ahead.
Because my father was also assaulted, a 62-year-old frail man. I am also requesting, I don't know if you would be able to email me the videos. I've reached out to the district attorney, I'm sorry, not the district attorney, public defender, said that none of, some of the videos were not available because the cameras were turned off.
So let's do this. Is your contact information on there? And if you could hand it to the city clerk, just hand it to this, on your piece, and we can make a copy of that paper if you don't...
Officer, I just want to say, I don't want to go through an attorney to get those videos. I would like to see them myself if possible. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So I know there's, Madam City Clerk, are there virtual commenters as well?
There are.
Okay. So we're going to take a break till 9:15 and then we will start again with the folks that will call in. And so we'll be sitting here and they will call in over the speaker. So we will adjourn the public hearing for, till 9:15.
I'm toggling now. And once Pablo unmutes, I'll know he's ready. Perfect. Okay, to comment on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature. To comment by telephone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, you will need to press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. As a reminder, we ask everyone participating tonight, please speak slowly to allow our interpreter to effectively express your comments. I see 27 hands raised. And I will ask the first to unmute. We're ready for you.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Hi, this is Heidi. We're all here for public comment tonight because we love our community and it's important to us that everyone feels safe, feels like they belong and has what they need to reach their full potential. After seeing what happened to Mateo, we are angry, heartbroken, afraid for our community's safety and more committed to ever than working collectively for accountability and racial justice. We must stop overpolicing and terrorizing our black and brown neighbors. This is not a case of a few bad apples or an isolated incident. This is a pattern of institutional racism. Imagine for a moment that Mateo is your neighbor, relative, friend, because he is. Imagine you get a call that he has gone to the hospital and has serious bloody injuries to his face and a concussion and is going to jail for resisting arrest. Imagine how your body feels when you see the video of him being treated without dignity and respect, of him being brutally beaten when no force is warranted. Officers Nail and Mazzariego and all of their colleagues who watched these atrocities happen to him and did nothing, did not show dedication, integrity and respect for Mateo or for our community. They did not provide professional, fair or compassionate services. They treated Mateo as if he wasn't worthy of any of these values or the mission they have sworn to uphold. We are afraid. The community is under attack by the very people who swore to protect and serve us. Later tonight, you are adopting a resolution for Latino Heritage Month that states how much you value our Latino residents who make up 30% of our population. The best way to honor our Latino residents this month is by taking action to hold the police accountable and providing justice for Mateo. Hire an independent investigator to do a complete review of the police department and work with the chief to transform culture in service of serving and keeping all residents safe. Hold these officers accountable. Provide non-escalation training. Listen to the Latino community you heard from tonight.
Thank you, Heidi.
Good evening. Hello. Good evening, council members. This is Tom McAfee and I truly appreciate the extended session you're allowing the community to air their righteous grievances. I have just a few things to add, but I'd like to start with a quote from the ongoing thread that's on Next Door. Quote, "What a joke from the San Rafael police chief. He is quote concerned, yet did nothing under the broader, until the broader public saw the video and was aware of these actions by his department." How on earth does that build trust? End quote. Council members, this is essentially another case of quote, what did they know and when did they know it? Plus, what did they do about it? You can and should demand to see a timeline that shows the following. Number one, when were both District Attorney Frugoli and Chief Spiller first aware of the incident? Two, when were they made aware of the existence of body cam footage? Three, when did they actually see it? Four, exactly when was the footage released to the public? And five, when were the charges against Mateo dropped and when were other actions of any taken? If it is shown that they didn't act immediately and well before the ABC 7 news report, then any apologies are rendered hollow and frankly pathetic. Like myself, the people here tonight were horrified and sickened by what they saw in the video footage. And however, I'm sorry to say that peace, the police chief, Spiller seemed content to shrug it off and let the officers involved stay on the job for more than a month. I find this at least as troubling as the incident itself. If Chief Spiller can't account for himself and explain exactly why he didn't immediately place the two officers involved on administrative leave, then he needs to resign or be relieved of his duties. Please, don't let San Rafael becoming another year...
Thank you, Tom.
I think I'm able to speak. My name is Lisa Bennett. The San Rafael police have said that this kind of act is not who they are. I know this because I filed a complaint when a San Rafael police officer dumped a man in San Francisco with no support, no family or friends, no housing. And this is what I heard when they replied to my complaint. I am sorry, but I strongly disagree with this SRPD line. This does not happen in a v- vacuum. This is indicative of a culture which allows for police brutality and allows for harm to come to the very people they are supposed to protect. I am not safer because of what happened to Mateo. None of us are. This outrageous act is unique only because it was caught on video. Thank you to the San Rafael City Council for demanding an independent investigation. But that only goes so far. You must establish citizen oversight over the police department based on what the community tells you they want and they need to see. And finally, you must demand that all the officers and enablers involved face criminal prosecution either from RDA or the state attorney general. Your inclination may be to think about how we heal from this incident. I would like to suggest that not -- that only with accountability and action then the healing can happen. Without it, it's just another empty listening session where nothing changes. Be just as bold in your disgust with what happened as Officer Nail was bold with his assault on Mateo. Don't shy away from conflict. Take responsibility. Use your powers and establish systems of accountability which show us that you will not tolerate this kind of behavior. Then we will trust you enough to heal. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I'm Phoebe Smith, a lifelong Black citizen in Marin County, centering my Brown brothers and sisters tonight, especially those like Mateo who have been targeted and brutalized by the police. First, thank God Mateo isn't dead. He could have easily been killed by these officers with impunity. Do you know what that means? Given the same exact circumstances, Mateo could have been killed and not only -- and not only would the officers not be fired, they would not lose one dime while under investigation for egregious behavior per the recording of their video cameras. If this council was serious about taking action and not hiding behind the Brown Act, which by the way makes more -- makes your silent complicit in these unjust and heinous crimes, you would have already put the weight of your position and power in -- on insisting that the chief of police immediately discipline these officers accordingly. Don't act like you, the city council, or the mayor, don't have the power to make happen what you want to make happen. If you believe what we believe, that these egregious acts of abuse are unacceptable, notwithstanding investigation, but by eyewitness account via the video cam, I implore you to take action beyond your nice white people rhetoric and take action against these irresponsible and racist police officers. Your silence and inaction make these irresponsible and racially-driven crimes against humanity possible. Please understand that just listening to the daily trauma of people is re-traumatizing when you meet that -- meet that sharing with inaction. We are watching what you do here, and your actions will let us know what your true intentions are if you are complicit in crimes or in alignment with justice.
Thank you, Phoebe.
I originally came to the discussion to talk about the 1515 Fourth Street project. I had no knowledge of the event in question. It caused me to Google the video myself to see what was going on. The word that best describes the contents of the body cam video, which is now making the rounds nationally, is inexcusable. I think that this is unlikely to be one of those things that just disappears down the memory hole. It clearly has touched the collective unconscious of their community and will resonate into the future, much like a rallying cry. Harry Truman is famous for his comment that the buck stops here. At this moment, the buck stops with you, the city council. The solution is not, in my opinion, an oversight committee where these kinds of things can get buried in the bureaucratic shuffle. What it needs is direct political accountability. The people have asked clearly to have these members of the police department held severely and personally responsible for the event in question. The ball is now in your court. You know exactly what needs to be done. You are now inextricable parties to this controversy. And I don't see any wiggle room here because right now, you are the deciders. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. My name is Mateo Diaz, and I am a high school senior and concerned member of this community. I'm here to speak about the incident of police brutality that was committed against Mateo in the Canal neighborhood, which many people tonight have taken time to show up and talk about. This incident is deeply and incredibly upsetting and enraging, but I can't say that I am surprised. This incident is not unique or standalone. It is representative of a larger issue within the San Rafael Police Department, and it took place within a culture of policing that is illegal, racist, and absolutely unacceptable. Not only are the actions of Officers Nail and Mazariegos horrific and deeply reprehensible, but so are those of all the other officers and individuals who witnessed the aftermath and failed to report anything to their superiors. How are our communities supposed to feel protected by officers like this, officers who persecute and harm the people of color in our community? It is supposed to be the role of police to keep people safe, but they are not doing that. Our Brown and Black community members are scared and hurting and traumatized. I see these effects in my very own friends and classmates. We must have justice for Mateo and for the Canal community. Officers Nail and Mazariegos must be removed from the force and appropriately prosecuted for their actions. The other officers who stood by must be reprimanded and held accountable for their actions as well. The overpolicing of communities of color like the Canal must end. These injustices committed by the San Rafael Police Department must end. Now is not the time for performative actions and empty promises. It is the time for concrete change. It has been the time for change for a long, long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mateos.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Soroka. I'm a San Rafael resident, and I share the outrage that's been expressed this evening about the conduct of the San Rafael police officers, not just with their excessive force, but their dishonesty and callousness. Why weren't they happy about their performance? Police should never be happy about using force, even if it's necessary, which this clearly wasn't. Of course, there has to be an independent investigation, but the public should know who's performing the investigation, and it should be the attorney general that conducts an independent criminal investigation, not the district attorney's office. In addition, the city should establish a civilian oversight board or work with other Marin cities to create a Marin police commission with subpoena power, and we need to have regular reports back to the community from this council and direct political involvement from you. If the chief doesn't act appropriately, he should be fired. And if you're concerned about the potential liability of inserting yourself directly into policing practices and policy, consider what it will cost the city in litigation and credibility when, not if, the next incident occurs. The Canal is overpoliced, and nobody can deny that. And it reflects an act that Latinx people and workers are disposable, which is unacceptable. And in my experience as a criminal defense attorney in Marin, I can tell you that the number of San Rafael police that show up to an incident involving people of color is almost always greater than if white people are involved. Without trust within the community, people will be less likely to call the police when they're actually needing public safety. How does every person of color in San Rafael feel when they see SRPD pull up? Do they feel safe? I bet you the answer is no. And we need to do everything we can to make sure that one day, that answer is yes, and that one day comes very soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matthew.
If I could also just remind everyone to please slow down your public comments to allow effective interpretation of those comments.
Good evening. My name is Jack Parnell Wolf. I'm a member of the county. I couldn't -- don't live there anymore, but I work in San Rafael, and I'm sharing the outrage along with everyone else here tonight. I'm also a member of the Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Commission for the county, and all of the work that I do there only confirms the experiences that we've heard tonight from our community, especially the Canal community. Youth are the ones that we should be concerned about now, and it's clear already from the fact that San Rafael police officers are dropping unhoused people off in San Francisco, and they're clearly using abusive force that is just now being recorded, as if this has not been going on for a long time. To pretend like there is any trust in the community right now would be absurd. And the only way that you're going to regain trust is if you actually show up with action tonight, as you've heard from many folks tonight. And that only -- the only bar for entering into that conversation is holding these police officers accountable, not just firing them, but charging them too. You know, it's something that I hope to say to the DA in my meeting with her at the Justice Commission, because it's asinine, the amount of people that are in positions of power in this county, the amount of times I've come to school board meetings, the amount of times I've gone to any meeting in this county where we have well-meaning white folks who don't actually do anything after the meeting ends, right? And I'm not going to pretend that after tonight, stuff's really going to change. It's on you. The onus is on you. And to pretend like the taunting and the high-fiving in this video aren't indicative of a much deeper culture of white supremacy, of police brutality that exists not only in the police department in this county, but in every institution in this county, to pretend that that is not real would be asinine.
Thank you, Jack.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Jaclyn Deveraux. I'm a San Rafael resident of seven years. I'm here to comment on the brutal beating of Mateo and the egregious and racist behavior of the San Rafael Police Department. I wish I had more than two minutes to repeat all the commentary, especially of our Latino community tonight. With that said, I will try to make the most of my two minutes. The behavior displayed on the videos was enraging, although unfortunately, not unexpected, and it was an abuse of power and use of excessive force. The released video footage, which showed the violent and racist behavior, Cavalier joking afterward with a trophy photo, is evidence of the toxic racist culture of the San Rafael Police Department. To say that it is not representative of the department is like a parent saying, "I raised you better." Well, apparently, you didn't. Your officers are an exact representation of your police department. In addition to what others have listed, the action items that should be taken are justice and compensation for Mateo, community oversight board with subpoena power to ensure police department accountability, a third-party consultant needs to be hired to investigate and analyze the entire police department and city and county government, but the police department is a focus of tonight, an action plan which includes a timeline and tangible accountability measures for the solutions. The city needs to establish a platform outside of the city council meetings to clearly communicate with the community about the progress being made, benchmarks achieved, and a place where the department can be held accountable. In closing, as I'm sure many of us are here tonight within this community, I am not an expert or professional in police reform, but there are plenty of professionals that are, and as one of the wealthiest counties in the country, I have to believe that we can hire them.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Priscalita Camacho, and I was born and raised in the Canal neighborhood. The incident that occurred July 27th has been an ongoing issue. It just highlights the harassment that occurs in our marginalized community daily. It's not the first time that SRPD uses excessive force among our community members, constant policing to our working class. These officers took an oath to keep the community safe. We all saw the opposite. Instead, Brandon Nail and Daisy Mazariegos lighting the report. How are citizens supposed to trust them or feel safe? They showed no remorse, no forgiveness of their actions. Our community fears the police, and this is exactly why. SRPD is supposed to uphold the law, but they themselves do not follow them. We need people to be held responsible. The police department needs to be retrained on how to de-escalate situations and learn to not let their personal biases and beliefs interfere as the assist individuals. I hope you really also can everything stated today and make changes necessarily. Chief, I want to know, what is there to investigate? Your police officers failed our -- failed their responsibilities and failed our community. They do not deserve to be working in the SRPD department. Please do what needs to be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, perfect. My name is Farley Camacho Velo. I'm a longtime resident of Marin and grew up my whole life in Canal. When I saw the incident that happened to Mateo, I thought of my dad, who comes, you know, to the Canal area after work to, you know, relax, hang out with his friends, and do whatever is necessary to relax after a long, hard day. When I see that a man is punished directly after a long day of work, I think, wow, this could have happened to my dad. This could have happened to my family. And this happened to Mateo. They brutalized a man who was just minding his business, an open container, a Latina officer who understood what he was saying, reaching for his ID by standing up, still did nothing while a white officer had beat Mateo. This is just a clear demonstration of police brutality, of the San Rafael Police Department acting as a gang, because that's what they are, if they're constantly harassing our community with vulgar demonstrations of violence. And there needs to be change. There needs to be accountability. They have a bloated budget of $22 million, almost 15% of the city budget. It needs to be reduced because there already has been training. There was training in 2020. There was supposed accountability that was going to be done in 2020 after the BLM protest, and there was nothing. They're still brutalizing us. What is to be done? The mayor needs to do something. The police chief needs to fire those officers responsible for this incident. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Oliver Camacho. Soy residente de Novato. Hoy en día siento mucha tristeza, enojo, miedo, inseguridad, y discriminación. Las personas que deberían protegernos, a las cuales les damos un trabajo, un salario, y un arma, lo utilizan para violentarnos, golpearnos, humillarnos, y tirar a la basura nuestros derechos humanos. Hoy digo basta de tanto ultrajo y maltrato. Hagamos precedentes y cambiamos este sistema de abuso. Hoy debemos destituir a estos malos ejemplos de autoridad y restablecer la confianza en la policía. No cambien las sábanas blancas y capuchas por un uniforme azul para seguir cazando a otros seres humanos que piensan son inferiores a ustedes. Exigimos el despido de Daisy Mazariegos y Brandon Nail. Todos somos Mateo. Gracias.
Thank you. We'll now have their translation.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Camacho. I'm a resident of Novato. Today, I feel sad, angry, I feel unsafe, and I feel discriminated against. The very people that should be protecting us, the people that we pay the salaries of, the people that we trust in, the people we give guns to, mistreat us and throw away our humanity and our human rights. This is an abuse that had happened, and I think that we need to change this very abusive system. We should remove these bad examples of authority in order to restore the trust that we had and not continue to give uniforms to those who hunt those who they believe to be inferior. So we ask for these two officers to be fired because we are all Mateo.
We're ready for you.
We're ready for you. We'll move on to the next speaker.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lucia Martell Dow, and I'm an attorney working in immigration field. I was part of the racial justice task force that were formed by former Mayor Phillips that was initiated after the murder of George Floyd. And I have to say that in part, I feel ashamed. When this violent incident happened that could have cost Mateo's life, I went back and looked at my notes from the task force, and I found a letter of resignation from the task force that I'd never submitted. The task force was dismantled, and we never heard again from the city. I wish I would have made a stand. I would appreciate if the city stopped referring to the task force and the racial justice work as some big accomplishment. I volunteer my time reading the entire police manual, and I did some research, and I quickly demonstrated that the language that comes, that's included in the manual, it's a boilerplate language that is repeated across many police departments. The city attorney and the former police bishop acknowledged during our first meeting that the police manual's language comes from a private company called Lexical. This company's business model is based on selling, and I quote, "A risk averse approach to police drafting." Or policy drafting. I believe that the use of force resulting in this tragic test are more complicated than trying to redraft a few sets of boilerplate policies developed by a company like Lexical. This company develops standard policies and have raised many concerns among activists across the United States. There were many provisions included in the manual, such as a duty to intervene. And what happened? What happened to the implementation and accountability of the changes that were promised during the racial equity and justice work? I have the privilege to work many community members that actually are interacting with law enforcement and have completely ruined the chances of having relief in immigration. I would love to be able to talk about all the consequences of life-changing of this type of interactions, like resisting arrest has on a person immigration case. I worked...
Thank you, Lucia.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Francisco Camacho. Estoy muy apenado y sorprendido con las leyes de la policía que abusan de su poder y siempre todo el tiempo con su discriminación, racismo por el color de nuestra piel. A mí me tocó una vez, quedo manejando a las seis de la mañana a mi trabajo y este, vas por mi color de piel, me paró la policía, me quitó mi carro, y se lo llevaron al corralón y perdí mi día de trabajo. Y me cobraron trescientos dólares de la grúa. Y desgraciadamente, por nuestro color de piel, así es que mira mucho, yo de mi gusto, me gustaría que cumplieran con sus como la ley, como nos aplican a nosotros, de hispanos a cualquier persona civil. Quisiera que también así lo pusieran con el oficial rendo y con Daisy que si yo trabajara para un patrón, no me lo van a permitir. O si yo daño a una persona, ¿cuánto daño? Te darán de cárcel. Me gustaría que también cumplieran las leyes, como supuestamente que aquí el gobierno es parejo, deberían de ser igual con los agentes de policía, que les dan, las mandan a la cárcel y despedida inmediatamente, así como si una persona trabaja en una tienda, si no sirve, te despide tu para trabajo. Si le falta el respeto a los clientes que vayan a comprar, los van a despedir. Yo me gustaría que ustedes cumplieran con su deber como gobierno debe ser, parejos con todos. No porque somos hispanos o porque somos emigrantes. Aquí colaboramos con, nosotros estamos pagando a la policía, a la ciudad.
Thank you for your comments. We will now have Pablo, or Charles, translate.
Good evening. My name is Francisco Camacho, and I feel very embarrassed and surprised by the way the police use the laws and the way they abuse power. They always discriminate against and act racially against us because of the color of our skin. One time, I had to go to work at six in the morning, and just because of my skin's color, a police car stopped me. They took my car, and then they impounded it. I lost that day of work, and they charged me $300 for the tow truck. Just because of the color of our skin, they shouldn't apply laws differently to Hispanics or any other person. It should be the same way for every civilian. And I just feel very surprised by Officer Nail and Daisy, and I just want them to follow the laws the same way we do. And they should be sent to jail and punished immediately. For like example, if someone works at a store and you don't treat customers right, they fire you. So I just want you all to comply with your duty as government to maintain equality for all of us, not just treat us differently because we're Hispanics or immigrants, and then it cuts off.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to speak about some experiences of harassment I've witnessed from the police department. I am a longtime resident of Marin County, and I have attended Camp Chance for many years. For those of you who don't know, is a camp that was started by several of the police departments here in Marin County. And they recruit children from low-income communities to come and spend a week in an isolated retreat with police officers. And I remember a few years back, right around the time that police brutality was being really shown to the public, all of the police from Marin County showed up with All Lives Matter and Blue Lives Matter apparel, which really demonstrated to me where they stood. And it just showed me that they were there to antagonize children who did not look like them, children who looked like victims on the videos that we'd seen. It showed me how immature all of the police officers were. And another example was when I graduated from the Sheriff's Academy, the police officer who was my teacher nicknamed me bitch because she thought that I looked like one. And when I confronted her in the hallway, she told me that I needed to act like an adult and stop acting like the little bitch that I was. And multiple of her coworkers had witnessed her call me this, and nobody said anything. And I am very concerned, because although there are hundreds of Brandons, there are thousands of Daisies who will be complacent and who will defend their coworkers. I also want to mention...
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Jasmine, and I am here as a brown woman living in Marin County to also speak on my outrage for the underwhelming response from you all after the disgraceful event where Officer Brandon Nail and Daisy Masariagos showed a clear abuse of power towards Mateo. I watched that video and had to take a moment to calm down in the bathroom of my workplace. I could not stop thinking of the trauma that Mateo and his friends had to endure. I couldn't stop thinking of all the brown people who don't speak English and have faced this kind of police violence, but have feared speaking up or didn't know how to ask for justice. And I couldn't stop thinking of the blatant arrogance and racism shown by all officers involved in the video. It has been said time and time again that these are not isolated incidents, and they continually get buried. These actions are not acceptable, and Officer Nail and Masariagos are not fit to be policing in our communities. We will not stop until we see Daisy Masariagos and Brandon Nail fired from SRPD and also held accountable. And also, let me clarify that it does not matter if they are placed somewhere else. Increasing training has been proven to not be an effective response. So performative actions like that, like trainings, are not sufficient responses and will not be radical and necessary change. I also want to add that the entire San Rafael Police Department have shown that they do not consider Black, Brown, and also unhoused individuals as dignified or even human by their consistent actions. Living with white terrorism in the militarized police state means that there is a new trauma every single day for Black and Brown communities and our neighbors who are unhoused. This trauma of police violence has a real and devastating impact on our families, on our communities, for generations to come. I demand accountability of the entire San Rafael Police Department, Officers Nail and
Thank you, Jasmine.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
One second. I'll be providing my own translation. Hi, I'm Nancy Palacios Devro, resident of San Rafael. Once again, we see the injustices that our community members continue to experience, the trauma, the shock, and the indignity. I'm demanding justice for Mateo, and what does that look like? Officer Masariagos and Officer Nail should never be allowed to serve in Marin County in any capacity ever. As for Officer Masariagos, shame on you. You, a Latina, look the other way, while your paisano was brutally beaten. Shame, vergüenza. Mateo deserves compensation for lost wages and an authentic apology by all leadership of San Rafael, because it failed him and our community. Our community is strong, unified, very frustrated, and will continue to fight for Mateo's justice. Hola, soy Nancy, residente de San Rafael. Una vez más, vemos las injusticias que continúan en nuestro condado, el trauma, el shock, y la indignidad. Exigió justicia para Mateo. Em pensando con los policías Masariagos y Nahel, no deben servir en este condado en ninguna capacidad. Oficial Masariagos, qué vergüenza. Espero que me escuche. Tú, una latina, miraste para el otro lado mientras tu paisano fue brutalmente golpeado. Una vergüenza. Mateo merece una compensación por los salarios perdidos, una disculpa auténtica de todo el liderazgo de San Rafael porque le fallaron. Justicia para Mateo. Nuestra comunidad es fuerte, unida, y muy frustrada. Pero continuaremos a apoyar a nuestro Mateo. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Yes, good evening. Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
I have to say thank you very much to all the people that have been the speakers. It is amazing to realize that the police department is run as a cuckoo's clan group, that we have a chief of police that consents these types of behaviors. You are the chief of a clan. You must resign. Along with him, the two police officers that committed such crimes, that is unacceptable. This is one aberration after another. The police department has been accused of these situations over and over and over again. This must end, and it must end by the resignation of that chief of police. He is part of the problem. If this gets not addressed by him, he is the problem. Along with our district attorney, the district attorney bears huge responsibility on these types of behavior. Not persecuting, not processing the police, it is wrong. So there, I accept your resignation as soon as possible, chief of police. Thank you very much to all that are advocating for this wonderful worker from Guatemala, who has been in this country running away from situations similar to these, where people lose their lives. And now he's victimized by again, now by the police here. Please, chief of police, resign. I wouldn't expect anything else. Thank you very much.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Daniel Levy. I grew up in Marin County. I live here now. So, you know, this isn't just about these two officers. This is obviously a cultural thing that's been covered already tonight. You know, I worked on an ambulance for about six years, and I got hit, I got spit on, you know, and not once did I hit a patient, not once did any of my coworkers even consider hitting a patient. This is, and the reason why is because that was not our culture. This culture comes down from the top, and this is endemic in our police department. So, you know, I come here with a couple of asks, which is, you know, San Rafael runs on the backs of people from the Canal. Like, that is the backbone of this entire county, to be honest, and there's a wealth disparity there. The district, including the Canal, the average household income is $70,000 a year. In the richest area of Marin, it's $250,000. And like, these systemic issues are, they're a sign of resource distribution. So, you know, what I ask is, one, put people from this community in positions of power. Like, how many of the members of this council are from the Canal? Are any of you? You know, that's one. Two, I know at least one of you is running for reelection this November. So I really want you to keep this in mind when you're running, because, you know, if you don't, like, if you don't listen to your community here, it will show up in the November elections. Lastly, why are these officers not in jail? You know, if I woke up and I punched someone, if I beat them bloody, I would be in jail right now. So prosecute these officers, prosecute people who watch them. And, you know, oh, actually, last thing. Don't you dare take money for the budget for training. Use the money that's already in there. Don't add money to the budget for training. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisa Scarsella. I'm a county resident. Quick comment in support of the dozens of community members who have spoken here tonight. My comment concerns the fact that we didn't hear about this horrible attack for over a month. I don't understand how this can happen. If the department and the chief were aware at the time, which they had to have been, it should have been made public right away, along with a plan to investigate the incident. If the chief didn't know about it, then there's a bigger problem in the department. Where is your use of force policy, and how does it get enforced? I know that other officers were at the scene, and they didn't speak up. The chief didn't speak up. And it seems this would have all been swept under the rug if the video wasn't made public. This is a toxic culture of silence and protection for each other, not for the community. This is not public safety. How can we be assured that this isn't happening more often, and we just don't hear about it? We need to know that something is going to change. Please be more transparent. We're calling for accountability now. Please let us know what you're going to do about it now. How can you restore public trust? Please take this chance to make a real change for the better. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hi, my name is Lisa Doring. I'm a San Rafael resident. And I appreciate all the many people who have come and spoken tonight and shared their stories of what goes on in our communities. This is an issue of white supremacy and systemic racism. None of it can happen with just one actor. There are many different people involved in supporting this systemic racism. The officers that assaulted Mateo acted with an air of impunity. The other officers who stood by and let it happen, everyone acted as if there would be no consequences, and there probably wouldn't have been if we hadn't seen this video. Why did DA Fergoli charge Mateo when it was a false arrest? Did DA Fergoli in her office view the video and charge him anyway? Or did they not review the video and charge him? I'm not sure which one is worse. The DA is in charge of prosecuting. I would hope that the DA will prosecute these officers as swiftly as she launched a case against Mateo. He will now have to act to get this false arrest removed from his record. It will follow him throughout his life, unless he is able to have it executed. It will follow him throughout his life unless he is able to have it expunged, even though the charges were dropped. So not only was he brutalized, emotionally abused, now he will have a criminal arrest on his record that will follow him as he moves through the world. This is not how we treat our neighbors, and I want everyone on the police department and in the city council to be held accountable for these actions.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hi there, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Andreas. I'm a, I'm a senior at SR. And, um, first off, I would like to say that, uh, Mateo deserves full compensation for wages lost, for harm done to his bodily person and to his dignity, and that, uh, the officers involved deserve to be fired and prosecuted to the full extent of the law because they committed a crime. Um, aside from that, I want to say that Mateo is an outlier. And not in a way that it was, uh, an unusual use of force, but in a way of five percent of the, uh, complaints ruled or filed against the Santa Fel Police Department rule in favor of the citizen. Uh, I can only imagine how many people are actually abused by the police and file for complaints, but only five percent of what is probably a very small fraction actually end up getting it ruled in their favor. Um, addition, uh, moving aside from that, in the past ten years, the Santa Fel Police Department budget has raised four million dollars. It, it, four million. In, with that money, you could have bought twenty-one thousand new textbooks for schools. Aside from that, you could have, you could have fed eight hundred and seventy families. That, uh, assuming a, a typical five-person family, that is thirty percent of the canal. You could have fed thirty percent of the canal for each of those annual budgets, but instead you poured it into the police, and this is what we get. So I would like to argue for an outside, uh, complaint filing service unrelated to the police department, independent, and I would like to argue for justice for Mateo, please, and thank you.
Go on, Andreas.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Evelyn Mazariegos, and I am just deeply saddened about the whole situation, about the SRPD's dishonesty. And we are asking for a complete review of police department and to keep it transparent. We want to feel safe and that we belong in this community. We are also striving for racial equity and not just equality. Um, we need, um, I wanted to say that this goes like hand in hand. Um, we need resources at our schools because there is a big disparity between school test scores, where Latinos are the majority, they have like a one or two, and other schools have like an, like an eight or ten. Secondly, we also need rent freezes and public housing and more resources for the, um, homeless. Um, next, um, the fact that the DA had already pressed charges against Mateo without even doing an actual investigation just shows how much the police can get away with things. We didn't even know what had happened until the video came out. We want a full compensation and his record cleared for Mateo, please. And based, I wanted to say, based on our Latino decisions data, it says that thirty-seven percent of Latinos know someone or has encountered police brutality or has been harassed by the police. Let's make a change. Let's be the difference. We want our local gover- uh, our local government to cut the law enforcement funding and to redirect it to sho- social programs. We need a reform that's, that will stop the killing and the abuse of our people. We should get rid of laws that make it hard to prosecute police officers, and they should be held responsible. We need to stop this abuse of power. Sadly, we, we saw what happened with the Jews and the, and the Nazis, and it was horrific. We're, we are all humans. All lives matter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Um, I want to start by saying that people from all over the country, and as an earlier speaker mentioned, even internationally, are dialed into this meeting and watching these, uh, events unfold. All eyes are on you, are on the city council, the mayor, the DA's office, SRPD, not only within the local community, but from far beyond. Um, you are being held accountable. You are our public officials elected to serve our community. You must do the most you can to bring justice to Mateo and to the community that stands behind him. I'm dismayed, like many others, unsurprised by the recent brutal and unwarranted attack um, by the police on a member, member of the Santa Fel community. This particular incident with Mateo has received a lot of attention. The body cam footage went viral. Uh, the com- community is really united and mobilized, um, to bring light to a longstanding issue, which has pla- plagued black and brown community members for a long, long time, but it's not an isolated incident. Many speakers before me have pointed out there are many witnesses to and victims of police violence in Marin and the Bay. This systemic racist violence needs to be addressed. Resources and funding need to be redirected from an ineffective and overly aggressive police force into actual community infrastructure and support. Officers Daisy Mazariegos and Brandon Neal do not deserve to continue wearing a badge when they abuse the power it gives them. Brandon Neal assaulted a community member and lied on his police report about it. Um, they should not be on paid leave. They should be fired immediately, charged for their criminal behavior like any other citizen of the United States, uh, and held accountable for their actions. And the systemic misconduct and culture of aggression evident within the department needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is Jessica Mena Flores, and I am overwhelmed. I'm exhausted. I'm tired. This has continued for a long, long, long time. Police brutality is a lot, a lot to take in as an individual who's also undocumented. And I'm really tired and overwhelmed. And just being here, um, losing my sleep at the cost of police brutality is exhausting. It's really exhausting because y'all don't know what the fuck you're doing. To be a cop, it literally takes six months, six months. Think about that. And the training that you get, it has no meaning. You have zero competence. The training is at the cost of hurting vulnerable communities, just like Mateo. I am exhausted, exhausted. We are exhausted. Cops were built off slavery, remember that. And this continues and continues and continues. I'm tired. We're fucking tired. I'm losing my fucking sleep. So y'all better do something, and this needs to happen quick. There's no waiting. There's no waiting time. Your time is limited, period. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So hi, everyone. Um, I think I'd like to say like all my peers tonight, we want justice. We want accountability. We cannot let this incident go without punishment. What kind of message would you be sending to the community of Santa Fel if these officers are not held accountable? The abuse and trauma Mateo went through will without a doubt stick with him. So I think, like everyone here, that the least we can do for him is start with justice and start with punishing these officers. If not, how can we make sure that Mateo or any other Latino member in this community does not go through this again? It's up to you. Like you said, listen, all eyes are on you. And I hope you make the decision to begin to right this horrible wrong. Hold those officers accountable, take a stand, and make sure that no officer feels the freedom to abuse their power like that again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
What happened to Mateo, as you've heard tonight, has affected many people in this community. I could tell you my feelings, but it would not be any different than those that have been expressed here. The charges against Mateo were dismissed, and we can speculate as to why that was. But the bottom line is that the police officers lied in the report, and their actions were unacceptable and in disregard of human life. If I recall, Mayor, you, you said you can't right any wrongs. But how about you take action to the, to right the future wrongs? It is time to serve the community that you were elected to represent. And yes, that means every single resident in the Santa Fel community. It's time to represent the people that you have sworn to be a representative of. Micah Gulati, you are a district representative for the canal area. It is your time to be the people's voice. You have heard the cries and the anger of your district, so now it's time to do what you swore to do, and that is to represent them. Mayor Katie Colton, it's time to hold Lauren Fregoli, the Marin County District Attorney, accountable. Hold her accountable to seek justice under the law for the real victim in the situation. The actions by both of these police, police officers are crimes and a breach of their oath to protect and serve the people of Santa Fel. It's time to set precedent for the community and make a statement to ensure that this does not happen again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello there.
Go ahead.
My name is Romario Conrado, and I use him as pronouns. Uh, I wanted to add my voice to this thunderous crescendo of community support for reform. I spent seven years of my young life in the canal. My dad still lives there with my three younger sisters. My tia lives there with my primas and tio. My, uh, childhood babysitter who babysat me for free, Rebecca, still lives there in the canal. I currently work in HIV prevention for the county, and those without health insurance, a lot of my clients are based in the canal. And so I'm here for them. And I think so many of these community members showed up tonight because in addition to standing up for Mateo, they knew this could have been someone they knew. This could have been them. I'll close by saying this was a major embarrassment for Lori Fregoli and those tasked with protecting us. I think this was an insight into her justice system that we don't often always get. And it's sad to think that more of this is happening behind closed doors. And it's sad that nothing has changed but the performance. I ask you to do better, Santa Fel.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Sage Mace. I am raised and born in Marin County. I'm also part of the Latinx community, Puerto Rican. This last year, I served on the Marin County Racial Justice Board. The harm of Mateo, as many have said, his brutal assault is a mirror reflective to the institutionalized racism of which our and the nation's police departments are built on. When I walk through Cuarta Madera on Friday evenings with my mom and my dad, I see moms with open glasses of wine. There are no police paying attention to them because they are white. When my former partner came and visited me in San Mateo, he was stopped by a police officer simply because he's brown. When my friend visited two weeks ago, again, they were stopped. And this is because they're brown. If you're black and brown, a person of color living in Marin County, policed. If you are white, you are not policed. I thank God that Mateo is alive and demands accountability. There must be citizen oversight over the police department. All officers must face criminal charges. And the Latinx community must be prioritized in the process accountability. Mateo must be prioritized. And as someone said, we will not let funding be added to the police department. That is simply a non-option. Can be no star to justice or accountability unless you center the Latinx community from the canal first in a restorative justice process and with political accountable, accountability. We will not rest until there is accountability for Mateo. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Joe McGary, and I, I live in, um, Marin County. And I'm calling to, uh, show my support for Mateo and the canal community, um, for the, uh, the terror, they've been terrorized for far too many years. And, um, I, I echo the call to terminate Officer Nail and Officer Mazariegos. And I also, um, amplify the call for the resignation, um, of Chief Spiller. And I, I have to say, like a much of, much of the community who called in, um, I, I'm outraged, but I'm not surprised. Um, they're, they are not surprised because of their lived experience, and I'm not surprised because I've, I've obtained a lot of data about the Santa Fel Police Department over the last year, and, and it's an extremely aggressive police department. Over the last five years, Santa Fel Police Department has, had made one arrest for every seven residents of Santa Fel, which is an astounding number. It, it's, to put it in perspective, um, the next closest Marin County cities were Sausalito and Fairfax, where it was one in thirty-four. One in eighty-four in Mill Valley. So it's a, it's a culture that is super aggressive. And while they're doing this, what they're arresting for, ninety-five percent of their arrests are for not, low-level, non-violent offenses, much like Mateo was taking part in, just having a beer. And so while they're doing all of that, they put up this facade of, of solving crimes. They've solved seven percent of property crimes, and twenty of twenty-five rapes reported in 2020 are still left unsolved. There is no reforming a system like this. The system needs to be defunded. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, um, my name is Juliana Martinez, and I grew up in Marin County. I am no longer a resident there, but I'm here speaking on behalf of my parents who live in Marin County amongst other family members and friends. I know that I don't have a lot of time to share my story as to why I left Marin County, but I want to say that it's why we are all here today. At a young age, I witnessed police officers verbally assault my mom for no reason at all. At a young age, I had to stand up for her multiple times and ask police officers to stop disrespecting my mom because she was not able to speak up for herself due to the language barrier. This is one of many racist experiences I witnessed. And today, I own my own business where I support community leaders across the Bay Area, develop strategic and sustainable processes to support communities of color and those underserved. Because having our community at the table when developing plans that will impact them is the key towards creating real change. My passion comes from the many negative and inequitable experiences that I faced as a young child, as a teenager, as a young adult while residing in Marin County. Like many have pointed out, Mateo's case is not the first, and if you do not do what we are asking of you, it will definitely not be the last one. Many times, our community members are really scared to speak up and to organize. But given the stories that I've heard today, we are no longer scared, and we demand that you take action and hold these officers accountable. Our community is tired. Our voices need to be heard, or else Marin County will suffer. This needs to end now. There are many ways in which your leadership can put an end to this. And no, I'm not talking about giving money to organizations that you normally fund. This is an opportunity for you to do something different. I'm talking about investing in grassroots and community-driven efforts. Like the gentleman mentioned earlier, take the time to hold a community meeting, a town hall, a focus group, a listening session, or whatever you would like to call it, but prioritize creating a safe and honest-
Thank you, Juliana.
Hi.
Hi, go ahead.
This is Olivia Beltran. I live in Santa Fel. I'm a Marin County resident. Thank you, everybody, for being there tonight for all these long hours. Um, I'm calling because- I've I've known of violence from police to community members, youth and across ages for many years. Not only San Rafael, but Marin City, Novato, Fairfax, you know, so it's not isolated case. If we were be, let's say, we would be fair, we would just fire the chief of police and hire a person that has a conscience of community. And at the same time, you know, dealing with real crime offenses, you know, because real crime does exist. But in reality, it's already enough money that the police department has. And it's very important to allocate funds for housing, childcare, elder care, all the very important needs in our communities. So as a mother, I think of Daisy. And I think that the responsible person is the chief of police because above all, he's a supervisor that emphasizes and makes sure that people are honestly conducting the law or enforcing the law. And points, I would imagine, that evaluates and reviews even those videos that are recorded. So the most responsible person, under my point of view, is the chief of police. And he should be the person that should be fired, not asked to resign, but to be fired for not ensuring that a young woman, Latina woman, came out of a community to become a police officer, to be misled by the supervisor that's there.
Thank you, Olivia.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, just like everybody else tonight, I'm joining. Just angry at what happened. And I'm, you know, I'm glad that the chief of police is there, present. And, you know, everybody's been throwing names out there, Chief Spiller. I'm not sure if that's what his name is. And Officer Nail and Officer Daisy. But I think this started a long time ago with different people around the department, especially Scott Everly. I don't think anybody mentioned Scott Everly, but that's the type of person he is. He's a bully. And he just has no compassion for people. So this does not surprise me like everybody else has said tonight. This is something that came to light because the person who suffered the consequences fought for this to come to light. Otherwise, this would have just been swept under the rug. And it's just it's just shameful that the chief of police would not bring this to light and the local news would not bring this to light because they bring a lot of things to light that are against people of color. So this is shameful, but I believe this starts at the top. So just like everybody else said, a thorough investigation of these two officers should be conducted. But there should also be a thorough investigation of the chief of police and Scott Everly because these two people contribute a lot to the to the culture of this department, the culture of being a bully. As a young kid, over ten years ago, I was arrested for something minor. I got those charges dropped. And it just so happens that Scott Everly was there. And just because of the skin of my my skin color, he looked me in the eye and he said that he didn't believe that that was the first crime I had committed. He believed I had committed a ton of other crimes just because of what I looked like. And he knew my employer. He called my employer and he got me fired. That's unethical, and that's a violation of privacy. And it's just.
Hi, my name is Barry, and I'm a resident of the Canal. I'm not sure how you're all managing. I'm overwhelmed listening to all the public comments, the life experiences, the emotions, the data and the facts, this reality of brutality and of the Canal. So foremost, I want to support all the anger, frustration, sadness that has already been expressed. I mean, it's really absolutely outrageous and it's heartbreaking. I want to reiterate just a couple of things that have been said already. One is about training. You know, there's a place for training, but I think a lot of this and the culture has to do with hiring the wrong people in the first place. And can those people even be retrained? Because they're the wrong people for the job. And we see that over and over again with instances in law enforcement. You know, I mean, it's not just the two officers, but all those other officers that are complicit in this outrage. How do officers even, you know, people talk about, let's fire these people? How do officers even, why do we even have to think about that? How do officers even continue to work as officers after this kind of brutality, the lying and being complicit? Is it the union policies and contract that you've agreed to, you city council have agreed to, that allow officers that engage in this brutality directly or indirectly to stay employed? Please add this to your review list, the the union contract. You know, a lot of white folks never believed how much police abuse was going on in communities of color until people got cameras with, got phones with cameras on them. And now this is becoming more and more clear how prevalent it is. The investigation has to be transparent, and action is needed now. I hope to learn details on your next step.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello.
Hi, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lisa Carrillo. I was born and raised in the Canal, and I just want to reiterate what many have already said. This is not a one-time incident. This is not new, and this has unfortunately always been happening in the Canal neighborhood. I have three personal incidents that happened to me as a teenager growing up in the Canal, but I'll just speak on one. Parked outside of Al's Liquor Store, some friends and I were stopped by cops and taken out of the car and asked if we had drugs. The cop claimed he smelled weed, so asked us to step out so he could search. My friend had ten dollars worth of weed inside her bag, which would be impossible for him to smell. He let my two friends go because he knew them and detained me, being that I was eighteen and one of them that he let go was seventeen years of age. He did not let me leave, though the weed was not mine, and called my parents to pick me up. I was humiliated with two SRPD SUVs there detaining me. They had me sitting on the ground. And of course, my parents got frightened and mad at me because the police had called them and told them that there was drugs in a car that I was in. For what? I was there for two hours just to make a show. What a waste of time and tax dollars, in my opinion. I demand justice for Mateo and for the Canal community that has always been marginalized since I was born. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My question is for Chief Spiller. I'm wondering why it took you a whole month for you to put those officers on leave? So did you do this only because you got exposed? And why did you, you didn't put them on leave, but you put them on paid leave? So you should, you're really embarrassed, and there's no way you can justify those actions. And you should not only fire them, but charge them and put them in jail, prosecute them to the extreme fullest of the law because he almost killed Mateo. And the DA, Fregoli, she charged Mateo with one felony in three mistimed years without seeing any footage. So this is so wrong. And where is she in this meeting? Is she at home relaxing? I'm really worried for not only my community, for my family. I had to remind my mom of her rights. This is just very frustrating. I'm angry, and I want to remind you all, elected officials, that the U.S. would be nothing without Latino immigrants. So fire them and prosecute them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. I have to make a point that this is so upsetting, but I also need to make the point that this is not only black and brown and Canal people. I have seen things like this all over San Rafael, not just in those neighborhoods, although it may be more prevalent in those neighborhoods. Please don't forget about the rest of San Rafael because it definitely happens in other places. The other thing is that when we had community policing, and I mean real community policing, when Jonathan Bean was here, things like this never happened because we had conversations and we spoke to each other, and the city council would talk to the residents. And it was just much more of a camaraderie, and I think that's seriously missing. The other thing I think is very interesting and I'd like to take note of is that the people who are making comments online get chopped off at exactly two minutes, and the people who were there in person don't get chopped off in exactly two minutes. So thank you very much, and somebody else can have the rest of my minute if they would like it.
Thank you, Lori.
Buenas noches. Soy residente de Canal. Yo vivo aquí en el Canal. Y aquí miramos todos los problemas que hay día a día. Veo que todos culpan a la policía por lo que pasa, pero ellos no saben lo que nosotros estamos viviendo acá. Nosotros estamos viviendo algo día a día que de verdad también estamos decepcionados. Necesitamos trabajar con la policía por nuestra seguridad. Hay mucha delincuencia. Con el alcohol, con drogas, carrera de carros. No se respeta. No respetan a la comunidad, no respetan a los vecinos. Necesitamos trabajar con la policía, sobre todo respetar la ley para que nos respeten y que sea un mejor Canal para todos. Necesitamos cámaras, necesitamos que la policía nos apoyen. Necesitamos que la policía también tenga encendidas sus cámaras todo el tiempo que pasa algo. En realidad, aquí está pasando muchas cosas en Canal, cosa que no podemos tapar con un dedo. Necesitamos todos los latinos ser justos, trabajar con la policía, no hacer problemas. Es prohibido tomar en cualquier esquina, en cualquier street, y nadie respeta. Desde que pasó la pandemia, todos estamos con una excusa que no tenemos donde vivir. Pero sí tenemos que soportar todo lo que está pasando. El alcohol se está viviendo día a día, hora a hora, minuto a minuto aquí en Canal. Soy residente, peleo por los que vivimos aquí. Pagamos taxes, queremos que también se haga justicia, que miren que hay gente viviendo alrededor. Y por favor, necesito que lo.
Thank you. We'll now have the translation.
Good evening. I am a resident of the Canal. I live here. We see the problems here day to day. I see that everyone here is blaming the police for what happens, but many of them don't know what we have to live out here. We're living in this type of situation, and it's very disappointing here. We need to work with the police for our safety. There's a lot of crime that happens out here regarding alcohol and drugs and car races. There's no respect. There's no respect for neighbors out here. And so we must respect the law so that they respect us. And we need to do it for a better Canal. We also need cameras out here. We need the police to support us. And that we ask that the police always have their cameras turned on whenever something is going on because many things happen here in Canal. Things that you can't just put one finger on and expect it to be, you know, covered. But we in Canal must work fairly with the police. We also know that it's prohibited to drink on the streets, but nobody has been respecting that. And since the pandemic, a lot of complaints about nowhere to, they have nowhere to drink, but we do, and nowhere to live, but we do. And people are drinking alcohol all day sometimes. I'm a resident. I fight for us here. I pay taxes and I expect justice. And I see other people living here, and we need, and comment cuts off.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead. We're ready for your comments.
Bueno, nosotros somos residente de San Rafael. Y este, vimos o vemos lo que pasa. Y este, no aprobamos la conducta de estos dos oficiales. Mas sin embargo, nosotros creemos que no toda la culpa la tienen ellos. Verdad, tampoco el problema que tenemos en nuestra comunidad se va a resolver este, despidiendo a dos oficiales o a tres o cuatro, al chief de la policía. Yo creo que nuestra comunidad va a mejorar cuando nosotros, la comunidad y también a los trabajadores públicos cambiemos y empecemos por dejar de hacer lo que está mal. Verdad, lo segundo que tenemos que hacer es aprender a ser humilde, a que nos enseñen. Porque creo que es un gran problema que nosotros estamos enfrentando. Y lo tercero es empezar nosotros como residentes de esta comunidad a hacer este, a poner de nuestra parte, empezar a obedecer las reglas. Verdad, es una de las cosas que más se necesita. Yo creo que entonces vamos a poder tener una comunidad mucho mejor, no solamente despidiendo a dos oficiales o a tres o no sé cuántos, verdad? sino que todos pongamos de nuestra parte para poder ver nuestra comunidad mejor. Tenemos que dejar de hacerlo mal. Ese es mi comentario. Muchas gracias.
We are residents of San Rafael, and we see what goes on. And well, we don't approve of the behavior of the officers, but we also don't believe that they hold all of the blame. We see issues in our own community, and I don't think that firing a couple officers will solve all of the issues. It will, I think the issues will be resolved when we as a community and you as the government officials help fix the issue, the bad problems going on. And so we have to be humble, though. We need to be taught because there's some big problems that we're facing. And we, as residents of the community, need to start to do our part by obeying the rules. And that's something that we really need out here. And I think that we could have a better community that way, not just by firing two or three officers, but we need to do our part to make the community better.
Thank you.
I see no further comment from anyone on Zoom. I would ask that, again, if you think you do have your hand raised, you'll need to press star nine if you're calling in. And if you wanted to provide public comment on Zoom, you'll need to use the raise hand feature. And I'll give everyone a couple of seconds just in case they'd like to. I see no additional public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public open time. And I'm incredibly grateful for our community for showing up, and we have heard you loud and clearly. And I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney. But before I do that, I know there's some, I had said at the beginning of the meeting that after ten thirty, we wouldn't do the rest of the meeting. And yet I think there's some people here that would like to comment on maybe the consent calendar items. Don't, yeah. So, and those consent calendar? Yeah, okay. So trying to balance all of this. City attorney, what if you have your comments and then we will have the consent calendar and the special presentation on Suicide Prevention Month, and then we would end the meeting?
That would be fine.
City attorney, city manager, is that okay? Okay. So with that, I will turn it over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Kate, members of the council, members of the community. My name is Rob Epstein. I am the elected city attorney of San Rafael. This is a very difficult moment for our city. Tonight, we heard many speakers struggle with their emotions as they delivered their remarks. I have been a San Rafael resident for my entire life. I am an attorney and am used to public speaking, but talking about this topic tonight is hard for me, too. I hope you will be patient as I do my best to respond to what has been said and to explain what the city is going to do about it. We have heard you. You are angry. You are demanding answers. You want immediate city act. You want immediate city action. Your comments and questions this evening echo many emails and texts that we received over the weekend. You want answers to your questions now. You are saying every person is entitled to be treated with respect and dignity. And you are asking, is this still true in San Rafael? And you are asking more. You are asking, how could what we saw on that video possibly happen in San Rafael? Why weren't the officers immediately placed on leave? Now that they are, are they continuing to receive their paychecks? Will the officers be disciplined? Will their supervisors be disciplined? Will their employment be terminated? Why is the city waiting? Why aren't people being fired right now? What does our police chief think about what happened? And what is he going to do about it? And what do our elected officials, our mayor and our city council members think about what happened? And what are they going to do about it? The use of force by police is an extremely serious matter that must be fully investigated and responded to for everyone involved. California law mandates it. Right now, the city is requiring that this incident be thoroughly investigated by an outside professional, a neutral expert who is unaffiliated with the city. We are assigning the independent investigator the responsibility to study the officer's conduct in detail and provide a comprehensive written report. The goal is to determine whether the officers and their supervisors followed or failed to follow the policies of the San Rafael Police Department. You may feel that question has already been decided by the video you saw. And yet, the law does not allow the answer to be derived so simply or quickly. The officers are entitled to due process of law, which includes their rights to legal representation and a fair and unbiased investigation of their conduct. Again, these requirements are mandated by state and federal law. The city must follow the law. At the conclusion of the investigation, after the independent investigator makes findings about the conduct of each and every officer and supervisor involved in the incident, the decision will be made about disciplinary action up to and including potential termination of employment. But that decision cannot legally be made until after the independent neutral investigation is over. In addition, the city's investigation will be separate and distinct from the question whether the district attorney will conduct any further investigation or action regarding this matter. I want to assure the community that I, your elected city attorney, will continue to be closely involved in this process as it unfolds to ensure that the city acts one hundred percent properly and lawfully in the course of the outside investigation and in the city's handling of all aspects of this matter. As for all of your questions tonight, the answers must wait until the process is over. I can assure you that when the investigation is complete, the city will publicly report all the information that it is legally permitted to provide. I regret that this response is not everything that you were hoping for tonight. But please know that the city council and I are deeply committed to making sure there is an unbiased investigation and that the law is followed. I would like to make a few additional comments. I spoke with the district attorney Lori Fregoli earlier today. She and I discussed the community's sacred trust that her office, as well as every local police department, must earn, maintain and protect on a daily basis. She and I agreed that all law enforcement officials, including police officers, must conduct themselves in a way that justifies the faith of judges and juries that our system of justice is fair. In addition, I also spoke with Charles Dressow, the lawyer who represents the individual who was involved in the incident. I am pleased to report, he told me that at the appropriate juncture, his client is willing and interested in pursuing a process of seeking justice and positive change that could include him sitting down with the police chief, the mayor and whoever else should be there to talk about what happened and figure out how to move forward from it together. We don't know yet exactly what that process might look like. We have to continue to discuss it and we have to work to make it happen. Meanwhile, the city will separately work to address what occurred and help our community begin the process of recovering peace and achieving reconciliation. I know at the outset that our task will be very difficult. The integrity of the neutral outside investigation, the employee disciplinary process and the city's legal position in any potential civil litigation can be jeopardized if any comments are made by public officials before the process is concluded. This is why, at this time, in the best interest of my client, the city of San Rafael, I have requested the police chief and our city council members not to comment about the specific details of the incident, the employee investigation, or the potential of a civil lawsuit. I will say this in conclusion. For the past fifteen years as your city attorney, I have worked closely with your city council and your city staff, including your police chief. I know them well, I know them personally. I have discussed this incident with all of them. And I know how strongly they feel about the issues that are raised by what they saw on that video and the importance of having an independent investigation of the officer's conduct. Tonight, you have told us and we have heard about our obligation as a city to ensure fairness in our justice system, including in the work of our police officers in the course of each and every one of their encounters with any and all individuals in our community. You told us this, you told us everybody must count or nobody counts. I know that Mayor Kate, our city council members, your police chief and your city attorney deeply agree with this statement. Thank you Mayor Kate, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Rob. I had said at the beginning of the meeting that we would end the meeting at ten thirty, but as I have already mentioned, because uh we have folks here to speak to the consent calendar, we will move along to that. And city manager, um, I think you agreed that we will continue the city manager report and the council member reports to the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Along with the rest of the business agenda, okay? So that, uh, the next item on the agenda is a consent calendar that has eleven items on it, A through K.
Mayor Kate, if I may, just relieve our interpreters for this evening.
Thank you, and I even have right here relieve interpreters, so, um, thank you Pablo and Charles for spending your evening with us and helping us make sure that we can understand each other and there wasn't a language barrier, so thank you so much Pablo and Charles. Okay. Thank you, okay. Consent calendar, I'll ask my colleagues, are there any items that you would like to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, not seeing any, I will open the public comment on the consent calendar and, yep, come on up. Yep, step up and say your name if you'd like to, it's helpful if you tell us what item number, but if not, we will figure it out by looking at our piece of paper.
Well, I don't actually know the um item number.
Okay, so just go ahead.
West End Street closures.
Yep, got it.
My name is Bob Ulrich, um, I am a thirty-four year resident of the West End. And I'd just like to say that, that I am absolutely deeply humbled by the weight of the work that this council is facing tonight. And so thank you very much for having, allowing, for hanging in there with us to come because my statement seems kind of trivial at this point. But as I said, I've been thirty-four uh years in the West End and um my living room overlooks um, the, the businesses that benefit from the street closures with the ban on, on the weekends. So for thirty-four years, the Whipper Snapper, the Half Pint and Johnny's Donuts, I've watched all of those businesses grow. Um, that stage is about thirty feet from my, my windows of my apartment, it's even closer to my, my neighbors. Um, I've been supportive of that whole project throughout because um, eh, eh, I, I, I appreciated how the parklets and the accommodations that the city and counties have been making to help facilitate that process, I think has been uh frankly remarkable. Um, uh, it was amazing to watch how all the businesses pivoted their um, their business. Some people had to go as far as to completely redo their business model. Um, the spirit of community was behind them and I watched Adam and his friends build the parklets out there, which they did a really great job on. Um, and I have no doubt that the music saved Adam's and Bill's business down there. I personally came down to support them numerous occasions and I'm happy to have contributed in some small way. Um, I also know that the music on the block is a long-term ambition of Adam Violentes. Um, and an app, an opportunity presented itself with COVID and Bravo, as I said to the city for helping facilitate that process for the business. Um, the Pint and the Whipper Snapper did not pivot though. And with, none of that is happening with those two businesses, they instead relied entirely on this event to stay in business. So all that momentum that was built from last year's music ceased when the music stopped. Um, instead of capitalizing on it, they went back to business as usual and from what I read in the IJ, none of them can afford to do that. Um, I know this because I walk by them several days a week. And I see what the specials are, there's the same specials and the same advertisements that have been going on for the last fifteen or twenty years. That's simply not good enough anymore, Sangria doesn't bring your people in and neither does turning on the game anymore. Um, their social media is completely silent. Um, the parklets go unused all week long except for Johnny's Donuts and the occasional smoker that comes out of the half pint, so that whole block there is completely taken up by those parklets. Uh, the tables aren't dressed, there's no plants on there to sort of dress the place up or make it any warm and inviting. Um, in years past, both of these businesses have hosted live music inside of their establishment. Um, that network that Adam supposedly has with all the musicians around the county, where were they to come in and do some scaled down sets in both of these businesses during the downtime? Absolutely nothing happened. Um, nothing creative to, to sort of keep the momentum going. Um, I would have a lot more sympathy for these two businesses.
If you could close your comments.
Yeah, so what I would like for, for this council is to, is to schedule a time, uh, first of all, I think that the event should end in September when they were scheduled to do and not be extended into October. And any decisions that are made about those um businesses should engage the, eh, eh, the local people in that and not be relying on biased data from a survey that was managed and distributed by Adam himself to his favorite people and the people who come there.
Thank you for your comments, thank you. Yeah, come on down.
Hi, um, what an unbelievably intense night to be here, um, and I, I feel the same. I am speaking about what I'm going to speak about just seems small. Um, my heart goes out to Mateo and his family and thank you so much for listening to me tonight and I really appreciate all the work that you do for our community. Um, my name's Elise Adams, my husband and I live at twenty-two G Street with our son. Uh, we live about a hundred feet from where the uh bands play. We love Marin, we love our little community, my husband grew up here. Our, my in-laws live up the street, my um, uh, brother-in-law and sister-in-law and their families live down the street. Um, this is our, our spot, we've lived here for sixteen years. Um, we are extraordinarily sympathetic to the difficulties that the businesses in the area have gone through from the pandemic. And we support the closure of Forest Street and the, love the parklets and love the whole idea. What has been problematic has been the um, the bands, the, the, the loud, the loud music. We live, like I said, a hundred feet away from it. And it, that worked when it was a, a yearly, you know, party. As you know, the concerts started last year and have continued into this year. I was disappointed from the lack of transparency on the weekly event. And um, I found out about the events not through any kind of public notice because nothing has ever been sent in the last two years. Um, I found out about it by the, the Marin IJ article and you know, I mean, I love live music and I, I want the bands to thrive and I want the, the restaurants to thrive, but unfortunately, from my bedroom, um, I took decibel readings that read from eighty to ninety in my bedroom. So there's, it, it's, I mean, we literally are a hundred feet from the concert, there's no sound attenuation. And um, yeah, I uh, I suffer from headaches and, and unfortunately And, yeah, I suffer from headaches, and unfortunately, the loud noise is not great for that. I'm glad that the community has choice to go see live music, but those of us that live next to the band don't have any choice. I, yeah, so I noticed that the item was on the consent calendar, and I think that this warrants discussion from the public, and I would hope that you could take it off that. There's also something else. There needs to be bathrooms. We've had several, caught several people relieving themselves on our property, because there's nowhere to go.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name's Joseph Adams. It's my wife, Elise, and she said much of what I wanted to say, and, but I'll be a little redundant in that I too approved and supported of the Dining Under the Stars. I think that's a great idea. What I never was alerted to, nor would have signed on to, would have been two nights a week for months and months and months on end of concert-like rock music that is just so loud, it's, it's hard to, you know, actually relay that. The other thing that's troubling is that none of the proper permits were actually handled appropriately from my perspective. So, this is considered a block party. A block party requires that there be notification of every resident within 300 feet of the, of the concert or whatever. No one received notices. It's not fair. No one had an opportunity to comment about, make suggestions, or voice any type of objections. And if this is considered to be some type of emergency situation, one could make a case for that, again, for Dining Under the Stars, but not for having rock concerts like this, where there's been nothing put in place in terms of kind of having, you know, appropriate parameters in terms of the noise, in terms of the duration, in terms of how long the, you know, whole event is going. Again, this made sense as a once-a-year, you know, kind of a thing. So, I think that's basically it. I'd like to, I know that there, you know, in addition to the other gentleman, my wife and I, our neighbor right next door to us, there are tenants in Abbot Kinney that are there. No one was even alerted to this meeting tonight to even make a comment. It was only through a stroke of luck that we found out that we could be here to even say anything. It's just, it hasn't been handled correctly, and we would like an opportunity to weigh in and have other tenants that I know for sure are similarly troubled by this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joseph. Anyone else want to make comments that are, it's in the chamber, on any of the items in the consent calendar? Yeah, come on down.
Hi, guys. It's been a long night. I wanted to thank Bob, Joe, and Elise for coming out and speaking on the topic, which is the West End Village closures and the music. Basically, I'm just here to understand the extension that is on the calendar for tonight. I was requesting the full month of October, and it's been recommended that I get three of the eight potential nights, and that's the only reason I'm here, is to understand why it's only three, and thank you for recommending me on three. And obviously, I have some neighbors that aren't happy with the noise, and as far as I know, I've been doing everything that I've been allowed to do, and I've been doing a really good job, and I have letters to support that from city employees. I didn't want to make this an open forum for people to come down and speak at my behalf, because I probably could have brought a lot of people down here to do that, and a lot of proximity neighbors that are very similar to the two that you just heard. But I would like to suggest that we do that in the very near future, and I'll do everything I can to put it on the calendar, because this is something that I'm going to try and get approved for next year, and I have every intention to do that. So, anyway, I want to thank you guys for your time, and it's been a long night, and thanks a lot. I think there's people on Zoom that want to speak at my behalf also.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from folks in the chambers on the consent calendar? We've been hearing comments on I, which is special event, street closure. We will go to virtual in a moment. Not seeing anyone, so I'll ask Madam City Clerk, if there's anyone that'd like to speak on any, actually, of the items on the consent agenda, which are A through K.
To comment on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature.
Oh, sorry, did you want to comment? Okay. Sorry. Madam, yeah, go ahead.
Mark Solomon's glad to still be here at this hour. I want to just make a comment about the National Heritage Month for Hispanic heritage. It's such an irony to have that recognition. It's going to happen every year, but somehow, this year should be different. It really should be different. And as much as Rob has outlined what needs to happen, I think San Rafael has to do something other than just proclaim Spanish, what is it, Latin America? What is the heritage? Heritage? I can't remember what it says.
It's okay, just let him.
It says Latin American heritage? No. Hispanic heritage? Okay. Well, let's do more than proclaim. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Now, we will turn to any virtual comments on the consent calendar.
To provide comment on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature, and if dialing in by phone, you can press star nine and wait until I've asked to have you unmuted. You'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comments. And I do see two hands.
Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Michael Jobe. I live at 16G Street, between Third and Fourth. I'd like to make some comments in, for the pros of having the Dining Under the Lights and the Thursday and the Friday night music down at our intersection. It's, to me, it's a, it's a great community building. It's been great community building over the last year during the pandemic. It's a, it's a model that's used all over the world, in Europe, is outdoor dining, and it's very successful, and I have so appreciated having it in our neighborhood. I appreciate the fact that it's only from 6 till 9 o'clock. I know that there are some neighbors that aren't happy about the volume, but us living at 16G Street, which is basically 150 feet away from it, have never had any concerns about the noise level. I know Adam is out there with his noise meter, is, is reading the, the, the volume levels and is very responsible about telling bands if they're too loud. I just think it's a real positive for our community and for our neighborhood, and having the benefit of only closing the street on Friday between G Street and F Street is, has a minimal impact on the neighborhood, and I've found that we really haven't had any problems in the neighborhood with, with this, this function. So, I'm a very big proponent of it, and I hope we continue it, not just the rest of this year through October, but...
Thank you, Michael.
Am I on?
Yes, you are. Go ahead.
Oh, great. Hi.
Wait. Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
No, it's like pixelate, like sound pixelation.
Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, I can hear you guys.
That's better. You sound better right now.
Okay. I'm Sarah Tippel. I'm with the San Rafael Business Improvement District, and I'm going to keep this really short, and thank you guys so much for all of your hard work. The BID supports the vibrancy that the West End Block Party brings, and I know that there could be a compromise to make sure that the neighbors are well-informed. I don't know if they, well, actually, I know they didn't mention earlier, but I have been in constant contact with all of them, with Elise and with Bob and with Angela, another neighbor. Anytime there was a complaint, I reached out to them instantly. I know that there can be a compromise, and I'm sorry I wasn't there to meet you, Elise and Joe, earlier, but this event, it really does bring a fun vibrancy to downtown San Rafael that it needs, the businesses need. And it doesn't, it's not just two businesses. It's, it's about the community. I just hope that we can all come to a compromise, and I think that we can. So, that's, I'm done.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah.
I see no other hands raised, and I'll give everyone a couple seconds.
I forgot to give the letter that...
Okay, you can hand that to the city clerk. Okay. I will close the public comment on the consent calendar. Sorry, I'm like pushing it to turn off. I would like to poll item I, so we can talk about that separately, but I would entertain a motion on A through K minus I.
So, moved?
Sarah, second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yaden Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. So, item I, it's a special event, street closures in downtown San Rafael, and I'm going to turn to the city manager. I know this conversation, we've had it before, and thank you all for coming down and providing in-person comments, as well as emails, as well as Sarah, and I did hear about the lack of neighbor communication. That is definitely, I'm sure, resonating with all of us, but I would love to turn to city manager, because if there's a compromise or mitigation measure, just how should we proceed on this conversation?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Kate. Staff definitely appreciates the complexity of this item when we were putting this staff report together, because every time we close a street, it's a balance, people are affected in different ways, and it's, so that's always something that we, that we think about and try to work through. As Adam mentioned, the request was for all of the Thursdays and Fridays throughout the month of October, and that's why, through this kind of conversation and the balance and trying to work out the different needs of the different residents and businesses around there, that's how we ended up on, on these three dates, to kind of meet the need of extending the, something that's been successful for these businesses and has been very helpful, but also not allow it to continue to such an extent that it's a major burden for others, particularly because there hasn't been a lot of outreach around this continuing. And one thing we talked about at the, our Economic Vitality Subcommittee meeting with the Business Improvement District and Chamber, is that if this is going to be something that our downtown would like to see, the BID would like to promote for next year, that we do have a much more robust community input process into that for next year. So, this was attempting to be kind of a compromise balance this year, and I'd be happy to work with Sarah, Sarah who just called in from the BID, to see if there's additional things we could do from a volume standpoint or hour standpoint or something like that, to try to make, make this less of a burden on the nearby residents for these three dates, should the council wish to proceed with this item.
Thank you. No, I think that would be welcome, that compromise either on length of concert, as well as the decibel. I will turn to my colleagues, see if they have comments or questions. Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, in working through this, and I've spoken with Elise specifically, and thank you for coming down tonight. I think to your, to your point, Mayor Kate, the examination of what can we dial down? Clearly, I think the most, the most immediate ones are obviously the volume itself. I think that the duration is another one that we talked about. Another consideration is that specific to, it wasn't made in the public testimony, but I know that in our discussions, that because of school-aged children, too, on a Thursday, that's very impactful, as we're now in the school year. So, I think, you know, Thursdays is something that I think are, are something that are specifically impositional. And with respect to the bathroom availability, in speaking with the businesses, they have indicated that the, that the bathrooms are available, that if people are not made aware of it, that there's more that can be done to make that sure that, that patrons are aware of bathrooms. All this said, you know, I would, in what Sarah Tippel had indicated, that I think we can work towards compromise. I also think that moving into the 2023 season, that there needs to be a more robust negotiation in advance, as, as it's clear that folks are not feeling heard going into those discussions. So, I would be in favor of continuing with it, moving it forward, in good faith of having a compromise reached for this year on those three dates.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Additional comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Bushy.
Question for Councilmember Hill, just to be clear on what you're recommending. You said carrying forward. Did you mean carrying forward the event or carrying forward the item?
I would like to have the item be approved in good faith that a compromise can be reached.
Okay, so we'll, we'll approve it tonight and instruct our staff to work with, with the BID to resolve these issues as best as possible in the short term with an eye towards next year.
Yes.
So, sounds great. I'd have to make that motion when the time is right.
And that is for mitigation now. It's not waiting for the October. What, what Councilmember Hill was talking about is not just on these three dates.
Understood.
Okay. It's starting now, having that conversation. Okay. Councilmember Bushy, go ahead. Unless there's any other comments? No? Okay.
I move that we adopt agenda item 4I with instructions to our staff to work with the BID to work at finding a compromise on, on items that can be adjusted to accommodate the neighbors' interests.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yaden Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. And I will note, we're, we are going to have this special presentation, but I will note that part of this conversation is the Stretery conversation, which is also on the agenda, which has already been continued to September 19th, because it's kind of that bigger, we were in an emergency phase before, and what does this look like as we go forward? So, just in case, getting a little with the word out, September 19th, we will talk more about the Stretery entire program. With that, I would like to have Director Atiya Hay come up. We're going to have a special presentation. It is, oh, I guess I'm going to do public comment first, before she comes up. I'm sorry. So, it is Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. I'm part of, we are part of, San Rafael participates in the Gun Safety Collaborative, and we know through that work, there's a lot of activities that are being, that are available this month, and we will speak to those after we get any public comment on this presentation we're about to have, a proclamation. So, anyone in the chambers like to speak to the proclamation about suicide prevention? Not seeing anyone in the chamber. Anyone virtually?
For anyone who's attending virtually, you can use the raise hand feature or press star nine if you're calling in by phone. I see no hands right now, but I'll give everyone a couple seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. And I am realizing that the proclamation is not on my dais at this moment. I think we were all so focused on first part of the meeting, as I realized the part that says, "Mayor reads proclamation," was going to be a little tough. I apologize. Okay, no, I got it right here. Thank you. No, 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 no. Sorry, and of course, my... As we all tried to find it on our computers. as we all tried to find it on our computers. Oh, wait, wait, you got it. Okay, you got it, Director. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Okay, that's why it's, I know. Okay. So in recognition that September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, it's intended to help raise awareness surrounding suicide prevention, resources available to our community. Whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion or background. And according to the Centers for Disease Control, each year more than 46,000 people die by suicide. That's one death every 11 minutes. And whereas suicide is the second leading cause of death for people aged 10 to 34, and 90% of people who die by suicide have experienced symptoms of mental health conditions. And whereas organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness and 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, you just dialed 988, work to help individuals in crisis and provide resources to shed light on this highly stigmatized topic. And whereas the benefits of preventing and overcoming mental health challenges, suicide attempts and loss and substance abuse are significant and valuable to individuals and our community at large. And whereas everyone, everyone can help prevent suicide by learning the warning signs, promoting prevention and resilience and committing to social, social change. Now therefore, I, Kate Collin, Mayor Santa Fel, on behalf of my colleagues, do and myself, do hereby proclaim the month of September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. With that, I will turn it over to Director Atiya Hade to receive the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Kate and council members. I will not go into the details of what you just read and the important meaning of every single word in there and every fact in there, but I will just close this off with a message. I'd like to accept this proclamation and attempts to continue to spread knowledge and awareness on this very important topic. My message, that's, that's not it. My message is for all those who are suffering quietly, those who are suffering not so quietly, and all the people who care and love them. I beg you, please speak up and ask for help. There's access to social health services such as 988, which is new, although there was a different number, but this makes it so much easier. Talk to someone you trust and remember that your life is worth living. So this will become more manageable. You have to work through it. I leave you with a quote by Ralph Waldo Emerson. Do not go where the path may lead. Go instead where there is no path and leave a trail. To me, this translates to blaze your trail. Your life is worth it. Let us advocate for you if you cannot advocate for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate your comments. And I'll note that Marin County is having several events. The website, hopefully we will, I'm trying to think if the, the city manager had it in your most recent snapshot. I think it's Mental Health Marin. So I do encourage people to take a look. There's a lot of great programs happening out there. Okay, with that, as I said, we will be continuing the remainder of the business items to a future council meeting. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.